Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen. Councilmember Fan West.
Present.
Councilmember Manzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Just one request. I had like to request for from the, from everyone. Today, after this salute of the flag, I would like to ask everyone to stand still for a moment of silence before we can continue with the invocation by Councilmember West. So now salute to the flag by Vice Mayor Nguyen and invocation by Councilmember West. Please stand.
Ready? Begin.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wishisian, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are deeply saddened by the incident that happened in Monterey Park and in the Happy Moon Bay. Regardless of what race or ethnicity, we are in the same boat in feeling the pain for this tragedy. What happened in the last couple days was devastating. Let us stand in solidarity with the city of Monterey Park, Happy Moon Bay, and their residents in sharing this grief. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims and their families. Moment of silence begin. Thank you.
Would you join me in prayer? Lord, we just thank you so much for tonight, the opportunity just to have another day, Lord. And as we remember the Monterey Park incident, Laura's shooting is unfortunate, but Lord, we know that this incident have draw people, the community together, Lord, and we're so thankful for that. And I pray, Lord, as we look at each other, that we will unite together and be stronger, United States of America, that's who we are, Lord. And may we unite together in love and helping one another through this tragedy. And Lord, we have so much more in common than what, than what we think. So Lord, we pray that you give us that perspective. And Lord, we thank you as we come tonight to do city business, also to hear the public, Lord, the resident. I pray that you bless this time and may it be fruitful. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Nguyen, and thank you, Councilmember West, for our salute to the flag and invocation. Next is City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had one item on the closed session. We had discussion and direction was provided. There's nothing further to report.
Thank you. Next is Export Communications. Is there any export communication from the council? Hearing then, so next is City Clerk Report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items from the clerk's office. We did have some minor typos and corrections on the minutes that were brought to our attention, namely that the mayor's office hours were corrected on page four as well as the spelling of council members' names. And also, we wanted to just invite the community that the notice of vacancies for all commissions are open to please visit the city's website. We do have application on the website as well as information pertaining to all of the various commissions, boards, and committees. So please take a look at that. And that concludes the city clerk's announcements.
Thank you.
Announcements.
City Manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and the community. So on Tuesday, January 17th, our police department hosted its first annual school summit, which took place over at the Rose Center. Representatives from all four school districts that serve the city, including school board members, trustees, superintendents, administrators, and staff members attended this. Members from the departments, including command staff, HLO, Special Operations, Gang Investigation Unit, etc., were also in attendance. And the goal of the summit was to provide updated training material regarding school safety, mental health training for students, family guidance and resources, threat assessment, respond to mutual aid, and tips on how to prevent school violence. Other local, state, federal agencies conducted presentations to the group, including our own Westminster PD, CHP, Orange County Fire Authority, Crime Survivors, the Secret Service, Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, Family Resource Center, Be Well, Interval House, and the Department of Education. The police department hopes to continue with this annual summit in order to provide updated training and resources for schools to help keep the students and staff safe. The police department prides itself on maintaining strong working relationships with its local school districts and prioritizes the safety of our students and staff. So I'm very proud that our department had a very successful school summit event. Tomorrow, the Westminster Senior Center will, will have a tea party. It's their first tea party in three years, so they'll have special decorations, refreshments, and, and friendship building. So again, if you are a senior and not a member of our senior center, you definitely need to contact them and, and join. They have a lot of fun activities. Monday, February 13th, there will be a luncheon in honor of Valentine's Day. So they'll be enjoying a delicious meal and entertainment from DJ Professor D. Space is available for both these events. So give the Senior Center a call, seven one four eight nine five two eight seven eight. Again, seven one four eight nine five two eight seven eight. And then, of course, Community Services and Recreation would like to welcome two new employees. So Sinae Valdez, who is a special services clerk, and Alicia Beckham, who's the new van driver for the WOW program. We'd like to welcome them to our team. And then, of course, this last Sunday, this past Sunday rather, we had our city's Tet, Tet Parade. And, you know, we held this, we held this parade with some very heavy hearts in light of the Monterey Park tragedy. But I'm, I'm excited to say that it, you know, it was a, it was, in the end, a beautiful day, a well-attended parade. I know there's some reports out there that have mentioned that it was, you know, the largest turnout or the largest audience ever. That's actually been, that's actually been estimated from people who, that estimate it was provided from people who've actually worked the parade, you know, over the last 20 years or so, and their perception is that it was the largest audience ever. I haven't been at all the parade, so unfortunately, you know, I can't make that assessment. But altogether, nonetheless, it was still a very well-attended event. We had about 70 different entries in the, in the parade. A lot of school districts, a lot of, you know, marching bands. We had different nonprofit groups out there, other cities and their city council members and, you know, staff, etc. It was just a lot of fun. And so I just want to, again, thank the community for joining us. Thank the city council, this council and the last council for, you know, putting faith in the, in staff to put this together. And of course, public safety was such a huge dynamic of, of Sunday's event. People all over were asking if we were going to cancel it or not. And I will say that our law enforcement did an amazing job monitoring the situation. So hats off to, to our PD as well as other... So hats off to our PD for, for all their hard work and preparation. So I just want to give a shout out to, you know, the police explorers as well, as well as advisors from the other jurisdictions that came out to help us. So city of Placentia, Tustin, Anaheim, Santa Ana, Irvine, Cypress, Seal Beach, Orange, Costa Mesa, La Habra, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, and the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And of course, our Westminster RACs and West County CERT, they were also out there as well, providing support. So thank you again for helping us with a very successful Tet Parade.
Thank you, City Manager. And the City Manager worked as hard as everyone else. And I want to take this moment to thank you all for putting the effort into making this event happen. And it was successfully done. Well-done job. Thank you very much. Thank you. Again, thank you, PDs, for, for the, all the work that you put in. Now we are going into the oral communications. And at this time, the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matters of jurisdiction. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers or submit a card to the city clerk. Any person wishing to address the city council via Zoom should press, press the raised your hand button. However, before we start, may I have a gentle reminder to all, in an effort to conduct city business in an orderly manner and in support and respect of one another, the following are the few reminders of our rules of conduct. Be respectful of other speakers and do not interrupt other speakers or council members. No profanity or vulgar language in any language. Please remain seated or quiet when asked to. Please listen to each other respectfully. And if you fail repeatedly to follow the rules, we may ask you to temporarily leave the council chambers for a cool-off period. Thank you. So oral communication, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker is Michael Ranjit, followed by Kenny Wong.
Good evening, councilmembers. Amy, I, I'd like to ask you a couple of things here. I, I'm getting a little confused about where you live, where you work. Now, you have a post office box in Irvine where they've sent you what amounts to a cease and desist letter during the campaign. However, your address of record for voting is here in Westminster. Now, maybe it's just me, but if I used a post office box, I'd probably have one at a local post office, not down in Irvine. The other thing was you've identified yourself as a co-proprietor of an independent rental car consortium. But yet, on other paperwork, I see you're listed as a business development manager for Loan Direct, which is obviously a mortgage loan company. Again, I'm a little confused what that is. You attended a local junior college, which is good for you, but you also said you got your bachelor's in education at Cal State Long Beach, except there really isn't an education program. I looked it up before I came here tonight to make sure I wasn't just imagining things. I, I don't know. I would hate to think that you're doing what others have done, both on this council and on the Westminster School Board by lying about where they lived just so they could get elected in a particular area, which, by the way, those are all felonies if you lie on those forms. I also wanted to ask about the time to speak, I noticed, is on the agenda. You want to cut it down to three minutes. I understand why you did it the last meeting because there were so many people to speak on one topic. That's your prerogative. You can actually do that. We've done that when I was on the school board. So that's not a problem, but I would like to see you leave that to five minutes. Otherwise, the only thing it tells me is you don't want to hear from the public, that you'd much rather cut them off at three minutes and basically tell them to go home. You also want to start your meetings earlier, six o'clock. That may or may not work out good. There may be people that don't get off work till five o'clock, and it's a stretch to get them to come down here and be able to speak at six. I know you want to end your meetings at 10:00 PM. Well, maybe yes, maybe no. If you ran your city properly, you wouldn't be here till midnight listening to a bunch of people out here complaining about your, your job that you're doing. Mayor, do you really need an office here? That's, talk about a waste of money. You've got offices over at the other building. I don't know whether it's because you figure you're the grand poobah now and you're in charge that you get a private office here in this building. What about the rest of them? They're all on city council. Maybe they would also like an office over here. Excuse me. And also, you want to rescind the fake news resolution that was voted in last time. Now, the only thing that that would make me think of is that it would allow you guys to go on, in your case, not so much Carlos, Vietnamese TV, and lie through your teeth to the residents who don't speak English. And you know what I'm talking about because I've seen the translations of things that have been said on Vietnamese TV. Okay, so we won't sit there and try to pretend that you didn't. These people sitting out in the audience aren't stupid. They can read, just like you can read. So you might want to reconsider that because if you get rid of that, again, all it shows is your disrespect for the residents of this city. Carlos, when you run again, let me know. I want to donate to your campaign.
Thanks, folks.
The next speaker is Kenny Wong, followed by Sandel.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen and the entire city council member. I'm Kenny Wong. Good evening, Mayor Charlie Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen and the entire city council member. I'm Kenny Wong. I'm the chairman of the city council. I'm the chairman of the city council. I'm the chairman of the city council. My name is Keith Han Wong or otherwise known as Kenny Wong. I am the vice president of the Quan Trì Monument Committee and also the president of the fundraising for that project. We were selected through an application process to be on the committee to build the Quan Trì monument. We were selected through an application process to be on the committee to build the Quan Trì monument. From the day that we were appointed, we were set on building the monument per the request of the city of Westminster. We worked hard every day to make the monument as fast as possible. It is the treasure of Quan Trì. And we hope that this treasure is a spiritual treasure of the history of the Vietnam War. It is the monument. We worked diligently, day and night, to build this monument. It was going to be an asset of the property of the city of Westminster, and it would be a sacred or holy symbol of the Vietnam War. Although we are old, we work hard. Even though we were older than 70, we worked hard. We tried our best to build the monument for the city and also for the committee. Many times, we were young because the monument was changed by the US soldiers entering Vietnam. And we had small or large exhibits to meet the needs of the US soldiers and Quan Trì. We had many delays due to the change in the designs of the monument, especially the logo per the request of former American GI who fought in the war. Every time, we had to change the exhibits for the Quan Trì. We had to wait one month, two months to go in front of the city and to have a meeting. And, and that's why it took so long for us to try to build the monument, the Quan Trì monument. As soon as the monument was built, we immediately announced the Quan Trì monument. We announced publicly the Quan Trì monument and started the process as soon as the exhibits were assembled two weeks later. So once the design was approved by the city council, we, we have meeting, we have press release, we have a press conference, and we proceed with fundraising within two weeks of the design's approval. We went to Utah to help Big Statute build the monument. So we drove across the country through four or five different states. We went to Utah to contact the big statue company to ask them to build five bronze statues for the Quan Trì monuments. We didn't want to delay the Quan Trì monument because we had to deposit 97,262 đồng. We went to Utah to help Big Statute build the monument. And because we did not want to have any delay, we deposited from our first meeting in Utah an amount of $97,262.60 to, we deposited that to the big statue company so that they could build five bronze statues of... That was the first time we had to deposit another half of the contract price. We didn't want to delay the Quan Trì monument So after the first successful fundraising, we also make another deposit to the big statue company. And that was the second $97,262.50. So we had deposited one half of the contract price. We didn't want to delay the Quan Trì monument because we had to deposit another half of the contract price. We didn't want to delay And because we did not want to have any delay, we made a third deposit in the amount, a similar amount of $97,262.50 so that the Quan Trì monument could be built without any delay. We listened to the opinion and also the city council's input. And because of that, we removed the wall from the back of the monument. We removed the wall from the design. And so the project or design was once again approved without the wall in the back. During the New Year and the Chinese New Year, we listened to the opinion and also the city council's input. And because of that, we removed the wall from the back of the monument. We removed the wall from the design. And so the project or design was once again approved without the wall in the back. During the Chinese New Year and the Chinese New Year we had to present the Quan Trì monument because of the Chinese New Year and the Quan Trì monument. We wanted to deliver the monument as soon as possible and build the monument. And because we were expecting that there would be delay due to the Christmas holiday as well as the Lunar New Year and then the Tet Parade, we emailed the city before December 25, asking for a meeting. But still, we still have not have a meeting. In short, we worked hard for the Quan Trì monument and the Quan Trì monument's mission. We continued our efforts to build the monument as soon as possible. But until now, we haven't had a concrete outcome. And per city's direction, we tried to build, we have the monument built as fast as possible. But it has been two and a half year and still, we still do not have a monument.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sandel, followed by Bok.
Hello, city council members, city officers or residents. My name is Sandel, a resident of Westminster and also a member of the guilty committee. Tonight, I would like to express my thanks to the, for the opportunity to proudly serve on the guilty committee since October 24, 2021. Although we are so busy in our daily work, maybe 50 hours a week, we did our best to desire the Victory Statue Memorial and raise the fund in Westminster and in Houston, Texas to build the monument. Unfortunately, our Westminster City Council was not capable to provide pieces of 500 square feet in our public land to place the Armed Forces Victory Monument. In 2008, General Lê Phi Long of the South Vietnam National Liberation Fund, as known as Vietcong, said, "The operation to attack and capture the Quan Trì citadel was the biggest loss in the Two Wars history with France and America." On the other hand, the recent Quan Trì citadel is the biggest victory battle of the American and Vietnamese armed forces. If history is not recorded, it will be lost. Or if we don't write our own history, someone else will. Based on the VC Vietnam War history, the Republic of Vietnam, as known as South Vietnamese Armed Forces, was a missionary force. And the American Armed Forces is an invading force. Hence, building the Quan Trì Monument will present our war history and promote a freedom-defending symbolism to our young generation. In the USA, everyone enjoys freedom. But not so many people care for full sacrifice to defend our freedom. In only eighty-one days, more than ten thousand soldiers sacrificed. But it takes more than fifty years to build a memorial, but it's still up to the air. Who will go to the front war frontline to face our brutal enemy? And receive cold shoulder from their unjustified caution, freedom, and joy? Thank you for your attention.
The next speaker I have is Bach. It's a Gmail address. The number ends in three, two, oh, two. The next speaker is Tri Lam, followed by Tom Lam.
I just wanted to remind you that you make sure that your time when the translator translates is ten minutes, then I have to cut out. So make sure that you stop before that. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Nhân dịp năm mới, chúc tất cả quý vị và gia quý ứng quốc hội cao.
On the occasion of the new, the Lunar New Year, I would like to wish all of you as well as your family good health.
Và mong rằng sau cuộc họp này, quý vị có thể rút ra ít nhiều của những ý kiến đóng góp của người dân Westminster để có thể thành lập hoặc để có thể bưu một cái thành phố Westminster dưỡng mạnh hơn và tốt đẹp hơn.
And so I hope that after today's, tonight's meeting, you would learn from the comments of the residents here. So that you could base on that and build a more prosperous and better city.
Tôi tên là Tri Lâm, tôi là cựu quân nhân của chiến tranh Iraq với hai thời của tổng thống Bush và tổng thống Obama.
My name is Tri Lam. I am a veteran of both Iraq war under President Bush and then President Obama.
Lý do mà tôi nói lý lịch của tôi tại đây tại vì tôi cũng đã và quý vị cũng đang làm việc với một lá cờ của nước Mỹ, lá cờ tự do của nước Mỹ.
The reason I brought up my military background was because I served under the American flag as well as what you are doing right now, serving under the American flag.
Hôm nay tôi tới đây có một ít đóng góp là cho anh Nam Quang Nguyễn là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
I'm here tonight, I have some comments that I would like to make for Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen, our city's vice mayor.
Anh đã và đang lập làm một cái kênh YouTube với một người tên là Nguyễn Tiến Dũng và một người tên là Ngô Kỷ. Hai người đó đã mã lị nói xấu những người đàn bà trên kênh YouTube của họ và anh Nam Nguyễn cũng đang ở đó.
You and two other people, Yum Thien Nguyen as well as Kinh Ngô, run a YouTube channel. And on your channel, while you were there, you allowed them to slander and defame women.
Những cái, những cái lời nói thô tục và mất dạy đó chứng tỏ là những người YouTuber rất là mất dạy.
I'd like to remind you that you can address to the council, but not to, not other people, okay? Because they are not, they are not here.
Please, please. And profane, it is her toward women.
Please, it's a count.
Now he cannot.
Okay, I understand. Go ahead, go ahead.
You said not interrupt. You did interrupt.
I did interrupt because of their interruption.
Then we finish, then you interrupt.
I would like to ask for quiet so that we can address the council, please, please.
Xin quý vị giữ im lặng để anh Rí đây có thể phát biểu trước. Tôi đề nghị ông thị trưởng phải nghe lời dịch của anh thông dịch viên trước, sau khi đó anh mới nói được. Tại vì bây giờ tôi đang nói cho anh những người dân nghe, anh chưa có dịch mà. Anh biết tiếng Việt không?
I, I propose that the mayor allow the interpreter to complete his interpretation before you make your comment or interrupting us. You understand Vietnamese, do you?
You interrupt. Và những cái lịch sử của anh ta thì quý vị cũng đã biết, tụi tôi chúng tôi đã gửi thư cho tất cả những nghị viên ở đây về lý và lịch của anh Nam Quang. Và hy vọng là ông luật sư sẽ kiểm tra lại những cái đó có chính thức hay không thì tôi hy vọng là quý vị hãy coi hồ sơ của anh ta lợi.
And you have already know his background. I send all of you as well as the city attorney or statement regarding his background.
Anh Nam Quang là người đại diện cho thành phố Westminster nói chung và cộng đồng người Việt nói riêng.
Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen represent the city of Westminster and also the Vietnamese community.
Tôi nghĩ ông thị trưởng nên phải xấu hổ vì có một thành viên như vậy vì vì ông ta là người là người đại diện cho ông đi ra ngoài đường phố.
I think Mr. Mayor should be feel ashamed to have such a member, a council member and a community member like that representing the city and the community when he acts like that in public.
Tại vì một thành viên của mình mà làm những việc xấu thì người chỉ quy phải có trách nhiệm.
So when a member did something that's not proper, then his leader or the one command should bear responsibility, should be accountable for that.
Còn nữa, anh Nam Quang đã để trên cái status của Facebook của anh ta đó là những con khỉ đấu tranh, đấu tranh cho tự do ở thành phố Westminster. Có nghĩa là tôi nghĩ tôi nghĩ là những con khỉ là ám chỉ những người speaker ở đây.
And Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen has on his Facebook status talking about monkey fighting monkeys, fighting for freedom in the city of Westminster. I think he was referring to the residents who are making comment here.
Còn nữa, khi mà anh ta ở Phước Lộc Thọ ngày ngày dịp Tết thì ảnh để trên Facebook, ảnh nói là đi Tết gặp xui gặp chó cắn.
So he also posts on his Facebook that when he was at the Asian Garden Mall on the occasion of the Tet, he, he was unlucky in that he ran into and was bitten by a dog.
Trong cái lúc đó thì chúng tôi đã coi cái video của ảnh trên YouTube chỉ có một cái lúc là chỉ ảnh cải lộn với một người dân tên là anh Mai. Thì không hiểu, không hiểu là có thể là ảnh ám chỉ anh Mai là một con chó cắn ảnh.
And so we looked on his YouTube, the only occasion we saw that he was at the Asian Garden Mall was when he had a broadcast with a resident named Mike. And so if he was talking about that, then he would be referring to our resident Mike as a dog.
Tôi chỉ đóng góp những ý kiến của tôi cho 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 ông thị trưởng vậy thôi. Nhưng mà nếu mà ông nghĩ là những hành động của anh Nam Quang làm đúng thì tôi không cần gì nói với ông hết.
So these are my comments and input for the mayor. But if you think and believe that Nam Quang Nguyen act properly, then I don't have anything else to say then.
Cảm ơn, cảm ơn.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam city clerk, before you proceed for the next speaker, I would like to remind each one of our speakers that you can address the council. And if you address the council with the evidence, backup, I have no problem with that. But please, don't mention any other people and their background and talk about it because they are not here to defend themselves. And we need to be fair about it. I did not interrupt him. I interrupt because I want to make sure that everybody quiet so that we get hearing from him. Okay, so.
City, I have a question for city attorney. Are we, hold on, can I, excuse me, council member, sorry about that. City attorney, can you weigh in on this? Are we now going to police the First Amendment rights with the folks is what they can? They cannot say we're elected officials, we need to be able to take good and bad criticism, that's what we send up for.
And I was gonna say the same thing is that I, I want to say the same thing before you answer that question is that since when do they, the speakers or the public have to come up with evidence? You certainly have, don't, when you talk about people, you don't come up with evidence. And in, you know, in this public forum, we have never done that. So let's not start something that is wrong. Start that precedent, that would be wrong. I disagree. And if the city, if the city attorney tells me that they can do that, I will make sure we will look, we look into this and there's, there's gonna see, you're gonna see some consequences because I can tell you that is wrong.
Next speaker, please.
So can you, can you tell us? This is the second time. I let it go the first time. But today I hear it again that we have this new, is it rule?
No, let me, let me comment. Public criticism is expressly allowed of public officials. So we do not want to in any way interfere with that. People give the right to come and express their concerns and that expressly includes criticism of the, of the council and anything related to their fitness, to their duty, to serve as council members. So those comments are allowed. We do not want to interfere with those. What I think the public needs to understand also though is when you're loud, you know, if you interrupt, cheer, clap, that kind of thing, that interrupts that person's opportunity to speak. So the mayor is correct in instructing you to please remain quiet. If you want to speak, you will get a chance to come up and make.
But city attorney, before you speak about to the public, okay? Before you correct the public, I want to make sure we correct the mayor. Because when the mayor says that they have to bring evidence, when they want to speak against anything that they want to talk about, okay? That to me is wrong. You want to confirm that?
Yes, there's, there is no requirement to bring evidence.
I can tell you, I'm sorry.
No requirement. I said there's no requirement.
I want to make sure we stop saying that because I can tell you that I will look to remove you. As a city, okay, of this city, if you keep letting him say that.
He just made a statement and that's correct. You didn't.
Excuse me, he just said he's not correct.
I'd like, I'd like you stop right now.
We need to bring evidence. Did you know? I just asked him and he replied.
That's rude of you to say you're gonna fire, you're gonna threaten.
But he just confirmed because he didn't.
Excuse me, I'm not. I'm talking in a cinema picture. Fire a staff. Okay, I want to make sure.
Remember, hold, council member, council member West, please.
I want to make sure that we confirm today that we're going to say that the mayor has to bring evidence. I confirm that.
And I, and I said very clearly, we, they do not have to bring evidence.
All right, the public, you heard that? You don't have to bring evidence. But you guys have to respond and don't interrupt so the person can speak.
Well, interruption goes both ways. We as council members have to be respectful of the public. There's many times the public has their perception and sometimes it's correct, sometimes it's not. But we here have to respect their First Amendment rights. This is America. And we have to, we have to make sure that they have the respect from us, not interrupting. And another thing too is up here, we don't need to go back and forth between council members bickering over each other. We're setting a bad example of this council is, like I said before, and I'm gonna say it again until you prove me wrong.
It's correct because shit should not be done.
You're interrupting again.
That's unacceptable. Please.
Council member Nguyen, I mean council member West, let me respond to this. Council member Manzo, I remember vividly that you told me last meeting that I understand Vietnamese. If there is a personal attack, I need to jump in. Didn't you say that? I did exactly what it is today. So please, stop, stop, there's no more of this, please.
When the translator, when, when mayor, excuse me. We, we need to, we need to stop the discussion that's happening here. We need to get back to the public.
Please call the next.
But I wasn't, I don't have the privilege. I'm trying to say something.
You can do it later, but right now.
I have a say something, I have the right to say something.
Please, I don't have the next speaker, please.
When the translator translated what the.
You're using a brown app. We're not supposed to dialogue back and forth.
When, when, yes, when the translator translated, I didn't hear no public, no, no personal attack, mayor, so.
The next speaker is Nguyen Hung, followed by Tom Lam.
Don't, don't carry up to them. I want to give you a copy for everybody here, the lawsuit from Nam Quan, okay? Please, delete, distribute because last time he said he didn't receive it, okay? I emailed twice and now I send one. Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Happy New Year, everybody. Tôi cái tên dưới đây là Nguyễn Hùng, mụ tại đơn vị bốn thành phố Westminster, California, chín hai sáu tám ba. Hôm nay tôi viết thư này để yêu cầu hai nghị viên Chà Ly Chín Nguyễn và Nguyễn Nam Quan hãy tử chức trong thời gian sớm nhất.
By the undersigned Hong Nguyen, I am a resident of District Four, City of Westminster, California nineteen sixty-three. I'm writing this letter today to request two members of the city council. That would be Chà Ly Chín Nguyen and Nam Quan Nguyen to resign immediately.
Trước khi đi vào chi tiết, tôi có một vài đề nghị như sau. Thứ nhất, giữ nguyên thời gian phát biểu của cư dân là năm phút cho mỗi người.
Before going into the detail, I have a few suggestions. First, keep the resident comments to five minutes per person.
Thứ nhất, tôi không giới hạn thời gian hội nghị. Nếu cần phải làm phụ trợ để giải quyết những việc quan trọng thì quý vị hãy nhìn Quốc hội California hoặc Liên bang. Họ cũng cần phải làm việc thêm nhiều phiên hợp cho những vấn đề quan trọng các bệnh cần phải giải quyết. Quý vị chỉ có làm việc 26 buổi, không quá 8 giờ trong một năm, 365 ngày, mỗi hai tuần và đôi khi còn bị hủy bỏ. Nếu quý vị than phiền thời gian họp quá lâu hoặc tăng giờ sớm hơn là không thực tế. Bởi vì đa số cư dân phải đi làm về nhà tối, ăn tối nên họp sớm, năm giờ chiều là không thể hợp. Mỗi tháng chỉ có hai lần mà quý vị không thể kéo dài phiên hợp khi cần thiết. Tôi đề nghị quý vị nên tử chức nếu cảm thấy không thể. Tôi đề nghị quý vị nên từ chức nếu cảm thấy không thể làm thêm giờ để cần giải quyết vấn đề.
Second, second, there should be no time limit to the council meeting if you need extra work or extra time to do important things. If you look at the California or US Congress or Senate, they also need long session for important issue. You only work 26 session, no more than four or five hour in a 365 day year, every two weeks or so. And, and sometimes that get cancelled too. So if you complain about the meeting time that take too long, well, it's impractical for people. Uh, if you change the starting time or the meeting time to an earlier time, most resident of our city have to go to work, come home, have dinner. So meeting time, starting, starting our meeting time at 5:00 PM is not appropriate. Uh, there are only two times a month. Uh, and so if you, if you don't think you can work a long session, then I propose that you resign from the council.
Thứ ba, nghị viên không được bỏ ra ngoài trong lúc cư dân đang phát biểu. Công việc của quý vị là lắng nghe nguyện vọng của chúng tôi. Ví dụ như nghị viên Nam Quan Nguyễn lần trước bỏ ra ngoài 15 phút khi bị cư dân chỉ trích.
Or council member should not leave the chamber when our residents speak. Uh, your job is to listen to our demand. Uh, Nam Phan Nguyen, for example, left for 15 minutes or at the last meeting when he were criticized by the residents.
Thứ tư, nghị viên nên có thái độ và tư thế đứng đắn khi cư dân phát biểu. Không nên xoay ghế hay đong đưa có vẻ thờ ơ và không quan tâm khi bất cứ ai phát biểu như thị trưởng Chalih Nguyễn đã từng làm.
Third, council member shouldn't have a proper attitude and posture, post, posture when resident speak. Uh, you should not be swaying or rocking in your chair to appear indifferent or disinterested when, when people speak like Mayor Chalih Nguyen did last time.
Thị trưởng Chalih Nguyễn nên học theo cách xử sự chuyên nghiệp như người truyền nghiệp là thị trưởng Chí Tạ. Thay vì đôi co với những người phát biểu và gõ búa, không cần thiết.
The mayor Chalih Chi Nguyen should learn to behave professionally or like your predecessor, Mayor Chí Tạ, instead of arguing with the speaker and unnecessarily hammering.
Cả hai nghị viên Nguyễn, tức là Chalih Nguyễn và Nam Quan Nguyễn nên đi học, lấp dạy cách điều hành và phản ứng, nhất là cần trau dồi thêm. Cái hành văn vì chính người Việt Nam trẻ trong cộng đồng đã nói với tôi, "The boy of you speak broken English."
Both council member Nguyen and Nguyen should take an orientation class on how to run um and react to the, how to run the city and how to react when, when people comment. Um, and especially you need to improve your speaking style because the young, young people in our community has criticized that both Nguyen speak with broken English.
Now, the lawyer of city.
Now, on to the city attorney.
Luật sư thành phố không nên nhắc lời cư dân khi phát biểu. Chức vụ luật sư là cố vấn cho thành phố tránh những vi phạm pháp luật. Nếu cần chỉ nên góp ý sau khi cư dân phát biểu. Đồng ý, ông được các nghị viên mướn nên ông cần phải bảo vệ họ. Nhưng ông không có quyền cố vấn hay ngăn chặn chúng tôi. Nếu cần ông cố vấn có thể đưa chúng tôi ra tòa nếu có sự xúc phạm. Trong chương trình nghị sự của thành phố có hướng dẫn cho mọi người luật lệ khi phát biểu.
Now on to the city attorney, you should not interrupt resident when they speak. Uh, your, your job is to advise the city council to avoid violation of the law. Uh, you are employed by the city council and you need to protect them. But you have no other power besides to advise. So you should not stop us. Um, and if you think that we did something wrong, you can take us to court. Or the city agenda already set out or provide guidelines for people to address the council properly.
Về thị trưởng Chalih Nguyễn, ông là người nói láo. Lần trước, ông trả lời cư dân Lâm Thành, ông không nhận được bản án của tòa về phó thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn. Ngày hôm nay tôi đã làm copy cho em, mỗi người và tất cả mọi người đều nhận được hai lần email. Và email đã báo cho tôi biết rằng ông đã nhận được một email ngày 14 tháng 12 năm 2022 và một trong mấy điện toán cho tôi biết ông cũng nhận được. Tại sao ông lại nói là ông không nhận được? Ông là một người công giáo, you are Catholic, nhưng ông vi phạm điều ran thứ 8. Ngày 12 tháng giêng năm 2023, tôi đã gửi lại một lần nữa. Ông nhận được email chưa? Đừng nói láo là ông chưa nhận được, trừ khi ông không biết tiếng Anh. You speak, open your mind, open your eye, mayor, listen to me. Về chuyện ông báo, ông bảo ai muốn biết bằng cấp của ông thì lên trường đại học Long Beach. Vậy khi cảnh sát dừng ông lại tội vi phạm lưu thông. What is wrong, what is? Police hỏi rằng bằng lái xe của ông, ông bảo đi ra DMV mà lấy.
I show you. Here, it's my job. You say you work and not drop. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, as to Mayor Chalih Chi Nguyen, you are a liar when you answer our resident tad lap answer last time. Um, you said that you did not receive the court judgment regarding Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen that I sent to all members of the council. Or I sent that email on December 14 and it was confirmed that everyone on the council got it. Um, so why are you lying? You are a Catholic, but you broke the Eighth Amendment. Um, I send that again on January 12, 2023. Did you receive it? Uh, don't lie, don't say that you did not receive it unless you cannot read English. Um, and I sue your degree at Long Beach State. Uh, uh, you told people who want to find out whether you have a degree or not at Long Beach State, they should go there. Well, when the police stop you for traffic violation, uh, are you gonna tell them and ask for your driver license? Are you gonna tell them to go to the DMV and see if you have a driver license? Um.
This is not drop, okay? I'm working, not drop, don't be lie me. This is, you are drop. This is not drop recommendation. This is, we are W. You say you don't have it, how come I have it, okay? Show me. I am police, I asking you. Driver license, you told me go to DMV, go, forget it. You talk to the kid. I have more on you, but you know my time is on what then? I don't want to talk to, you come by the right time and talk about you. Did you recognize it? Say, don't, don't say no, okay? Don't say no. You, you want I read it?
Time's up. The next speaker is Tom Lam.
Thank you very much. I am police.
Hi, các thợ gáy, kính chào Hội đồng Thành phố Westminster, hả?
First of all, my sincere greeting to the city council of the city of Westminster.
Thứ gì, tôi xin cảm ơn ông Calos và bà Kimberly Ho. Hôm nay dám nói tiếng coi như cho được sự công bằng cho người dân của chúng tôi.
Uh, second, I would like to thanks our council member Carlos Manzo and Kimberly Ho for um.
Sự công bằng.
For bringing justice and fairness to the voice of our residents here tonight.
Tôi cũng muốn nói là thưa với ông luật sư.
I, I would like to address our city attorney.
Ông Hùng, Hùng Nguyễn đã nói rồi, nhưng tôi hôm nay tôi vẫn nói tiếp là ông nên coi như là đừng bao giờ chĩa vô cái bản họng của chúng tôi.
Even though Mr. Hong Nguyen had already said it, I'm gonna say it again. I want to ask that you, the city attorney, do not jump in and interrupt us.
Tại giờ đây, tôi xin thưa, phó thị trưởng Nam Quang Nguyễn. Do you have a deep one? Yes. Yeah.
So now on to Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen.
Đây là bản án, tòa hình sự cút tòa thượng thẩm Santana về việc ông bị cách ly vợ con với tội trạng mang súng không giấy phép, đột nhập gia cư bất hợp pháp và bảo hành vợ cùng hai đứa con bà ông. Thị trưởng Sát Ly Chí Nguyễn nói là đã không nhận được, nhưng hôm nay tôi hoàn toàn phản đối.
So this is the judgment from the Orange County of the Santa Ana Superior Court regarding restraining order against you with respect to your wife and children for carrying a, possessing a firearm without a license and also for trespassing and violence for your wife and your two children. Uh, and, and, and these are the document or the judgment that Mayor Chalih Chi Nguyen claimed that he did not receive. Uh, I'm gonna show that that's his wrong thing.
Các ông thị trưởng Sát Ly Nguyễn, Nguyễn Nam Quang và ông Nick Khoe Công Lê, chất riêng là Lê Công Tâm đã du cáo báo người Việt và nhà báo đổ vũng chủ trương xuyên tạt thành phố Westminster vì danh dự của thành phố với tư cách là một cư dân tội. Yêu cầu quý vị hãy tri tố báo người Việt về tội có khuynh hướng xuyên tạt thành phố Westminster thân yêu của chúng tôi. Xem video clip www.youtube.com. Ông Nam Quang Nguyễn. Okay.
Uh, Mayor Chalih Chi Nguyen and City Council Nam Phan Nguyen and Mr. Nick Lacon or Lê Công Tâm slanderngười Việt Daily News and their journalist Jung Do for distorting the cities of Westminster. Well, for the honor of the city and as a resident, I ask that you bring a lawsuit or you prosecute the newspaper for what you claim to be or slander my lovely city of Westminster. And please watch this YouTube video clip at youtube.com, watch.
Ông Nam Quang Nguyễn là một YouTube và đã lợi dụng, đã dùng chức năng này để xâm phạm đời tư và tấn công cư dân. Ngoài công cộng ngày 20 tháng 1, 2023, ông đã cùng với Nguyễn Tiến Dũng xách nhiễu cư dân bằng video quay sau lưng hai vợ chồng của ông Mai Trương từ trong Phước Lộc Thọ ra đến ngoài đường Bosa.
Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen, you are a YouTuber and you use that platform or forum to invade the privacy and attack a resident in public. On January 20, 2023, you and Yung Tin Nguyen harassed our city resident. Uh, you filmed them from their back and harassed them, this couple, Mike Trung and his wife. Uh, you follow them, you from Lock Hall, from the Asian Garden Mall to Bosa and you harassed them, filming them from the back.
Cùng với những lời ngôn ngữ tụt tiểu cũng dư du khống họ trước mặt. Nhiều người đang đi chơi một chợ hoa tết tại đây. Ông có biết ông đã lạm dụng chức vụ phó thị trưởng qua công việc YouTube không phải hành nghề báo chí và là một sự vi phạm qua, một sự vi phạm đời sống riêng tư của cư dân. Đây là một sự gia chạm quyền lợi vì ông đã lạm dụng hay lấn lộn giữa hai cái mũ. Ông đang đội YouTube hay là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
You use obscene language or in front of a crown. Uh, there were lot of people at the Ted Flower Market there. Uh, you abuse your position or as Vice Mayor. Uh, are you a Vice Mayor or are you a YouTuber? You are not acting as a journalist when you violate the privacy of our resident. And I see, I think there's a conflict of interest here because you are wearing two different hats. Are you a YouTuber or are you a Westminster City Council member?
Một phó thị trưởng không thể cãi nhau hay kéo theo thành viên và một băng đảng đi nhục bã người khác ngoài công cộng. Như vậy, tôi hỏi Hội đồng Thành phố và luật sư cũng như tổng quản trị, cái người phạm Nam Quang Nguyễn này có xứng đáng là phó thị trưởng của quý vị hay không? Tôi đề nghị hãy từ chức tên Nguyễn Nam Quang này.
As, as, as a Vice Mayor, you should not be hurling for vanity and bring gangs member with you and insult people. So I have a question for the city council here. Uh, is Nam Phan Nguyen worthy, worth it or deserving to be a city council member? I, I suggest that he should be removed.
Một lần nữa, thưa quý vị, một người giống như Nam Quang Nguyễn không xứng đáng là một cái người nghị viên chứ đừng có nói chi vào phó thị trưởng. Tôi không biết cái bà Emmy Phan West gì đó. Không biết bà có học cái phốc khoái trai linh để bà vào làm nghị viên hay không? Mới vô tuyên thệ chưa đầy 10 phút đã giới thiệu cái tên Nam Quang Nguyễn này vào làm phó thị trưởng.
Uh, I don't think Nam Phan Nguyen deserve to be our Vice Mayor. I don't know if council member Emmy Phan West or have gone to the orientation on how to act and how to become a, how to act as a city council member because just 10 minutes after being a city council member, she vote or recommend that Nam Phan Nguyen be our Vice Mayor.
Lần cuối, một lần nữa, tôi đề nghị ông Nam Quang Nguyễn hãy từ chức đi. Đừng để cho người dân bị phấn đấu tiếp tục. Cuối cùng, tôi xin chúc quý Hội đồng cũng như quý vị có mặt ngày hôm nay được nhiều sức khỏe, an khang, thịnh vượng. Xin chào.
Once again, I ask that Nam Phan Nguyen resign from the council. Uh, and as to the entire city council, I would like to wish all of you a New Year with good health and prosperity. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Trung, followed by Robert Harrison.
Yeah, this for you. Tôi nói lớn lắm, tôi tôn trọng.
Đầu tiên, chào tất cả mọi người.
Uh, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Hôm nay tôi nói tiếng Việt.
I'm gonna address the city council in Vietnamese tonight.
Bởi vì tôi muốn chắc chắn là anh Nam Quang hiểu những lời tôi nói.
Because I want to ensure that Mr. Nam Phan Nguyen understand what I am saying tonight or understand everything that I'm saying tonight.
Bởi vì tôi rất nghe nhiều người nói là lần trước anh Nam Quang không hiểu tôi nói gì.
Because I have heard from many people uh, saying that Mr. Nam Phan Nguyen did not understand what I was saying last time.
Hôm nay quý vị có thể thấy hơi bất ngờ là tại sao tôi mặc đồ quá đẹp đúng không?
So you might be surprised or wondering why I'm dressing so nicely tonight.
Một người mà hiểu tôi nhất đó là anh Nam Quang.
Uh, the person who understand me the most would be Mr. Nam Phan Nguyen.
Tôi nghĩ đây là không trò cười, cái không phải trò cười được, cái đây đều xỉ nhục.
I, I don't think this is a joke. I think this is an insult.
I don't think this is a joke. I think this is an insult.
Lần trước chúng tôi lên đây, Nam Quang đã lên mạng và xưng danh là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
The last time I was here, Nam Quang went on the internet and introduced himself as the Vice Mayor of the City of Westminster.
Và cười đùa chúng tôi là phải ăn bẩn đầu bếp giống Nam Quang.
And he laughed at us. He said that we should dress or wear a suit like like himself.
Tôi tôn trọng điều đó.
I respected that. That's why I'm wearing a suit tonight.
Từ hôm nay, tôi chắc chắn là anh Nam Quang sẽ không hiểu làm những gì tôi nói.
And so I think from this time on, from this meeting on, Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen will not have a problem understanding what I say.
Tôi lên đây có một vài thứ để nói. Đầu tiên, tôi giống như mọi người ở đây đều yêu cầu anh Nam Quang từ chức cảnh sát hàng tốt.
I am here. I have a feeling to share, but the first thing I would like to say is like many here, I want Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen to resign as soon as possible.
Thứ hai, tôi lên đây, tôi cho thành phố biết và thông báo cho thành phố biết là Nam Quang đang tấn công mạ lệ tôi với chức vụ là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
I'm here tonight because I want to give, so I want to let the city know and I also want to give the city notice that Nam Quang Nguyen as a Vice Mayor, as a city Vice Mayor, is attacking and defending me.
Tôi là một thương gia.
I am a business person.
Tôi đang thưa người partner của Nam Quang.
I am suing Nam Quang Nguyen's media partner.
Và cái kê đen là ở appeal, bên đó là appeal.
And that case is on appeal or is being appealed by their side.
Tôi lên đây với tích cực xây dựng và chúng tôi, tôi không muốn là một cái gay mắc cho thành phố Westminster.
I am here. I want to contribute positively. I do not want to cause problem or trouble for the city of Westminster.
Là thành phố phải gay biện pháp hay là một cái gì đó để ngăn cản Nam Quang tiếp tục mạ lệ hủy bán gia đình chúng tôi với danh nghĩa là phó thị trưởng?
I want the city to have some measure to prevent Nam Quang Nguyen from attacking and defaming my family as the Vice Mayor of the city.
Những gì đã xảy ra, tôi có thể tha thứ nếu bắt ngại từ hôm nay mà Nam Quang còn tiếp tục mạ lệ chúng tôi. Chúng tôi phải để tên thành phố Westminster với là người bị cao.
I can forgive and let go what had happened. But from tonight on, if Nam Quang Nguyen continue to attack and defame us in his position as the Vice Mayor, then I'll...
Bỏ tên thành phố như thứ được thừa nhận luôn.
Then I would name the city of Westminster as a defendant in my lawsuit.
Điều tôi không muốn làm.
That's something that I do not want to do.
Sau đây, tôi sẽ đưa những vài bằng chứng.
So I have some evidence I would like to present here.
Mới ngày hôm qua,
Just as recent as last night.
Nam Quang tuyên bố tôi là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
Nam Quang announced that he's the Vice Mayor for the City of Westminster.
Trên channel của him và bạn quảng cáo bán thuốc điểm tóc.
On his general talking hair coloring products.
Và dùng tên tuổi taui để mạ lệ làm cho cười.
And he then called out my name to defame me and to make fun of me and my name.
Nặng nề nhất, anh Nam Quang gọi tôi là người bẩn tâm thần.
Most seriously, Nam Quang said that I am a person with mental problem.
Trước đó, ngày 20,
Before that, on the 20th,
tôi đã gặp Nam Quang ở ngoài Phước Lộc Thọ.
I ran into Nam Quang at the Asian Garden Mall.
Nam Quang đã giở trò cô đồ.
Nam Quang was acting as a threat.
He put để cái phone gần mặt tôi ra dậy.
He put his phone up close near my face like this.
Quý vị nhớ hai tuần trước tôi ở đây với tinh thần rất là mạnh mẽ.
You knew that I was here two weeks ago with a positive attitude.
No, strong, like strong, loud voice.
And I speak, I spoke in a loud voice.
Nam, Mr. Nam Quang, can you be serious man? You have to show your shit. Don't laugh like this, please. Like Mr. Chi, he laugh. You run the show, can you call him? He laugh at me right now. You see that? He shown everybody. He did not respect. I cannot control you. You laugh like this, Nam Quang. Be serious, okay? Be serious, okay? When I met, when he attacked me at Phước Lộc Thọ, oh, sorry.
When he attacked me at the Asian Garden Mall?
Tôi hỏi anh là YouTube dợ bơ hay là phó thị trưởng?
I asked him if he were a YouTuber or Vice Mayor.
Câu trả lời của him là nào?
His answer was oral communication. Oral communication.
He chỉ nghe thôi.
He just listened.
Nhưng điều hàn hạ hay?
But...
Hàn hạ, sao nói hẳn?
No, 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 we got it.
Nhưng điều hàn hạ, xin lỗi, cái điều dơ bẩn là Nam Quang không trả lời gì cả.
The nastiest or most cowardest thing that he did was that he did not respond at all.
He về cái channel YouTube của him.
He then went back and went on his YouTube channel.
Cùng với người tôi đang thưa.
Together with the defendant in that lawsuit I mentioned.
hủy bán tôi thẩm đại.
And the two of them defamed me.
Với danh nghĩa là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
And when he did that, he did it as the Vice Mayor of the City of Westminster.
Lần trước tôi lên đây rất là lớn tiếng, mạnh mẽ.
The last time I was here, I spoke in a loud voice. I was strong.
Nhưng hôm nay tôi không cồng nữa.
But tonight, I'm not like that tonight.
Bởi vì sau khi đọc cái án lệnh của Nam Quang.
Because after I read the judgment against Nam Quang.
Ví dụ như khi Nam Quang sử dụng súng bất hợp pháp.
For example, he used a gun or had a gun illegally.
Mua súng bất hợp pháp.
He bought a gun illegally.
Mr. Chi, I have the evidence.
Mr. Chi, I have the evidence.
Và dùng súng để đeo dọa vợ của him.
And he used a gun to threaten his wife.
Thì đơn giản nghĩ rằng, Nam Quang đối xử với vợ như vậy thì đối với tôi sẽ cũng khiếp hơn.
And so if Nam Quang can do that to his wife or treat his wife like that, then to me, he can do what he would be able to do to me. Nothing he would be, nothing that...
Tôi tin rằng những người trong nhóm của Nam Quang trước sau sẽ tấn công tôi.
I believe that Nam Quang and his group, the people in his group, will attack me soon or later.
Nên tôi bây giờ tôi phải đi với cần vệ của tôi.
So now I have a bodyguard to accompany me.
Hôm nay là thành phố.
Tonight.
Time's up. The next speaker is Robert Harrison.
I like your scar.
The rest of the City Council, the staff, Westminster PD.
Chúc mừng nam moi.
Quan Trì Monument Committee is made up of honorable and respected members who put their lives on the line to fight against communism and to keep a people free. They're very respectable people. But the Quan Trì Monument Committee was wrong for the city of Westminster and should be disbanded and the project terminated. The original Vietnam War Memorial Agreement dated April 2, 2002 intentions prohibited adding any other sculptures to the park. I would like to add something to any motion that might be brought up tonight. There should be a permanent ban on monuments or structures being built in Freedom Park or any other public park land. The Quan Trì Monument Committee, a special interest group that does not represent the entire Vietnamese community and certainly not a majority of the citizens of Westminster, wants to place their historically inaccurate Quan Trì Monument into Sid Goldstein's Park or Westminster Park. The city of Westminster is recognized internationally for Sid Goldstein's Park and the Vietnam War Memorial. It's a holy place. American Vietnam veterans come to pray with the South Vietnamese to remember those who paid the ultimate price and those that still suffer today. Why would you want to destroy the ambience with this historically inaccurate Quan Trì Monument? You have heard from Sid Goldstein's daughter. Please respect Freedom Park. No more monuments. It has been suggested from you that the nonprofit pay all cost. Nonprofits do not have a perpetual source of income. The monument, as soon as the monument is constructed, the nonprofit will fall out of compliance again and the city will have total responsibility. Westminster Memorial Park is the permanent no-cost solution. It's, that's where it belongs. One would think with nearly 400-plus petition signatures opposing any city park placement, including all the public and virtual comments opposing placement in Freedom Park but recommending Westminster Memorial Park, the council should respect the majority of the Westminster citizens and not some special but honorable special interest group. It was challenged that the signatures were not from Westminster residents. Not all the American Vietnam veterans and other actual participant signatures signers on these petitions. These people who take part in Freedom Park events need to live in Westminster. I personally know there are some from LA, Arizona, Nevada, San Jose, San Diego. Lieutenant Colonel Greg Mandible, Oklahoma. Veterans are from all over and we come to Westminster for the Vietnam War Memorial and pray with the South Vietnamese. Passed with selecting a location, the Parks and Recreation Commission, they said no to Freedom Park or Westminster Park. It was supported by an outraged citizens 100 to 1 against any park placement. I resigned from the committee and these are reasons that the City Council should look at. I did not want my name associated with the committee skirting the democratic process, a pre-planned, agendized, historically inaccurate depiction, not open to the general public, Brown Act violations, no real code of ethics, dishonoring the American Vietnam veterans and America's contribution. There would have been no victory without American participation. Disband, dissolve, terminate. They will seek private placement. Stop all the future costs to the city. Be financially responsible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Westminster Watchdog, followed by Lee Nguyen.
Good evening. Terry Rains, Westminster Watchdog. A huge shout out and congratulations to City Manager Christine Gordon, ACM Adolfo Ozeta, Community Services Director Vanessa Johnson, Police Chief Darren Laney, Mayor Nguyen and everyone else who worked their butts off planning last Sunday's great Ted Parade. The parade was more organized and enjoyable than past parades organized by outside groups. You pulled off a friggin miracle despite everything. Christine and Adolfo, you are the best leadership team ever. You guys rock. Item 3.5, destroying and robbing staff of a perfectly good conference room just to accommodate Mayor Nguyen's ego and his whopping four hours per week office hours costing taxpayers $11,000 is ludicrous. Meanwhile, offices in this chamber building sit vacant most of the time. The council meeting time ordinance, item 3.6, is not effective until the first regular meeting in March. Our two new council members are unwilling to put in the work required to hold their seats. Nam Quan, during your very first council meeting, you left the dais six times in less than three and a half hours and you missed 17 minutes of the meeting. On the dais, like now, you look completely bored and unable to even pay attention. Step down and let somebody actually capable and willing do your job. It is infuriating that this new gang of three refuse Councilman Manziel's very reasonable substitute motion to reduce public comment but allow speakers to address the council on individual agenda items and/or sections when they are heard, item 3.8. Instead, the gang voted to slash our speaking time by 40%. This, plus their vote to require two members to add agenda items plus their vote to cut meetings down to four hours, clearly proves Westminster is now under the control of authoritarian oligarchy. Just how does that align with fighting for and preserving personal freedom, Amy? Look up hypocrite in the dictionary. Then look in the mirror because you are the ultimate definition of hypocrite. Vice Mayor Nguyen, you must recuse yourself and not participate in item 5.1, rescinding Resolution 5103, denouncing fake news. 5103 came about because of the plethora of lies and disinformation propagated by you on your trash media network. On Form 700, your income sources are listed as YouTube and Facebook. You clearly have a financial conflict of interest here and extreme bias. You are not a journalist, Nam Quan. You're just a bad actor who spreads sensationalistic bullshit propaganda to our most vulnerable Vietnamese-speaking community and now you are doing so under color of authority. That is serious. That's bad. True journalists follow the Society of Professional Journalists Code of Ethics based on four key principles: seek truth and report it; minimize harm; act independently and be accountable and transparent. You sure as hell don't do any of that. Item 6.1, I shudder just imagining airhead Amy, knucklehead Nam Quan, or crackpot Charlie representing our city on outside agency boards. They are literally incapable of reading or comprehending reports, formulating concise thoughts, speaking intelligently or staying on point. Item 7.2, Nam Quan and Charlie want to disband the Cultural Arts Commission. They don't even understand or appreciate the positive effect of broadening community participation in the arts in our city. It is not formed yet because the city clerk's office unfortunately has done a poor job of advertising and recruiting for commission vacancies, including this one. Do not disband this commission. Instead, encourage bringing positivity to our city through the arts. Item 7.1, I opposed the QT monument becoming a city project and committee one and a half years ago and I still do. It has been a total waste of city resources trying to work with this obstinate group. I attended all committee meetings and even reached out to members privately to encourage compromise and historical accuracy. My efforts were rewarded last July with a publicly disposable email from a committee member, Quan Nguyen, that read in all caps, quote, "How dare you send me an email. I don't know you and I don't care. F U C K off." And it wasn't spelled out, unquote. Nice, huh? So, demand that this committee be disband, or disband this committee and terminate the project. This will either A, force them to pursue placement at the memorial park or other private property or B, it's going to result in another monument-related lawsuit filed against our city. It's amazing that our own elected and appointed officials seem hell-bent on suing the very city they represent. Good God. And I'd like to request Nam Quan and Amy in particular, wipe the smart ass, pardon my language, smirks off your face when the public is speaking. You show respect. Your job is to listen to us. Your job is not to interrupt us, not criticize us. You have to listen. And you leave the dais every time you, I don't know why. You got ADHD? I don't know. But you need to stay here and do your job. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Nguyen because my English sucks, so I need my friend read for me in English. I have only two questions. Number one, for Miss... Uh, number one, now for Miss, uh, uh, Pham West.
The first question is for Mrs. Amy Pham West. You just got elected into the city council. What do you know about Mr. Nam Quan that you hurried to promote him to be the vice mayor? While he himself doesn't have any experience as a council member. Is it true that because you are a member of the Bolsa mafia gangster, therefore you need to establish the power and secure the control of your gang? The second question is for Mr. Nam Quan. The majority of Vietnamese immigrants here are victims of the communist government and risking their lives to run away from the cruel, evil, and inhuman communist rulers. After almost twenty years sitting in their city, Tretta opened arms to welcome communist Vietnam to invade Bolsa Boulevard, the main street in Little Saigon. Mr. Nam Quan has officially praised the chairman of Vietnamese Communist Party in one of his YouTube videos. Mr. Nam Quan also participated in a party with a group of communist government officials right in the city of Westminster. Now you got your way to be the vice mayor. Do you have intentions to put the city under the council and control of communists later?
That's it. I think if this job is too hard for you, three of you need to step down, please.
The next speaker is from Viet Youth Media, followed by Tony Buong.
Mayor, Mayor, can I just, this has nothing to do with this speaker. I just,
Yes, please.
For, for everyone, if, if you want the extra five minutes, you have to have a translator. So in this case, she only spoke for five minutes, so that was fine, but it should be, the way the law reads is if you utilize a translator, you get your time doubled. So I just want to be sure that's clear, that last speaker only spoke for five minutes, but.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Well, I was preparing to, uh, speak in Cantonese because, uh, in the light of what happened in Monterey Park and Moon, uh, Half Moon Bay. Uh, but, uh, well, we already, uh, have a minute of silence to honor all the victims of, uh, those events. But, uh, because of what happened, I have to go ahead and, uh, improvise and what I have to tell you guys. So from the last, uh, meeting, I've heard a resident tell you, "Well, I will try to be respectful, call you mayor." Well, that elder gentleman told you to go back and learn something, to do your job. Do you, do you know what your job is? Why did you three run to be in this council? Do you know what you're here for? Do you understand your duty, your responsibility? First of all, this is oral communication, okay? You think this is a time for us to trust you, to bash you? You have to put up with it? At the very beginning, I heard from a brayer, you said, uh, hopefully that no more of those, no more of the people that come up here to criticize you? You think, do you have to put up with us? Go back and learn of your duty, okay? Why, why did you run? Why did you want to be our council member? Why did you want to be a mayor? Why did you accept to be our vice mayor? You know why you're here? You know, I'm not talking, Charlie. I'm not talking. I'm speaking. I'm telling you, we, the people, the residents here, in the oral communication sessions, tell you what you think of your performance, how you want, how we want the city to be ran, how we want the city to be in the future. And you are the public servant. Get that through your thick head, okay? You are the public servant. We, the people, the residents, are your boss. If you want to be a teacher, go and apply to be a teacher. Don't sit there with a gravel to tell people to quiet, to be quiet. Learn English, okay? You don't tell people to be quiet. That's very rude. That's barbaric. Know your English. If they talk out of turn, you tell them. You don't tell people to be quiet. You don't use your gravel like a monkey in a suit. That's ridiculous, embarrassing. And just like people tell you, Amy, are you proud yourself to nominate a deadbeat dad? A guy who skipped payment to support his children, five, seven-years-old children? And he didn't even pay the money to support them? Are you proud if your sister, your daughters, marry a guy who would pull out guns to threaten their life? Are you promoting evading tax for a guy who owed the state tax money? Are you promoting loot conduct for a guy to go on YouTube to use profanity? Number one. Sorry, I don't, I offend the translator here. He's certified. But he didn't translate it completely. I'm sorry for the language, but this is a fact. I have to say it. You didn't just say fuck you. You, you tell the people, not your enemies, not some criminal. They didn't do anything wrong. They just, they just happen to be on the other side, your opponent. They organize an event and you tell them, fuck their mothers, fuck your fathers, fuck all of you. That's what you said to an eighty-years-old, to fat boy. All the people, and that's what you say in Vietnamese, fuck your mother, fuck your father. Would you like me to say that to your face? And Amy, are you proud that you nominated this guy to be our vice mayor? Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Buoy, followed by Tru Bo.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Nguyen, the mayor's vice mayor, Nam Quan Nguyen, city council member, Charles Menzo, council member, Alan West, and council member, Kim Lee Ho. I am Tony Buoy. I have been living in this city for twenty two years, and I keep coming up to this podium to express my concern to our city. Today, I will reveal my true color. This is the color of beer. Make America, American break again. Maga, not maga only, okay? Please remember this. This is the first one, make American, that mean own American. No matter you are Vietnamese, no matter you are Chinese, no matter you are Japanese, no matter you are Colombian or Mexican or, uh, Germany or Irish. You are own American, American. You have been naturalized to be America. So you have to serve the American, American country. And I have been witness, all of you come up here. You represent for Vietnamese to condemn your old Vietnamese. Shame on you. Most of the people here, American real, they look down on the Vietnamese, Vietnamese. You are the one who turned down our Vietnamese-American heritage. What is our American heritage? We trust, we hold truthfulness, we hold honesty, and we hold solidarity. But you all come up here to spread fake news, fake issue to, to divide among Vietnamese. And especially, the roots of all the problem is from Madame Po. She is the one who create all the problems for our city. I tell the truth, and I, I am the one who come up here to keep telling the truth of that. Because when they have the Quan Trì Monument one already established, five of the members established and agree that it will be, um, going for the people, for the people. So then, Kimberly Ho, she cut down and she colluded with other two to cut down things. And then it create a big, big problem for our city of, uh, Westminster and dividing our people. So today, I want to show you the problems that Kimberly Ho said that when she start doing things and she will resign if she was not elected as a.
Okay, thank you.
Let's hear.
My decision, um, if I am not the elected mayor of the city of Westminster twenty, this coming election, uh, that's November eighth, twenty twenty-two, I will remove myself from the city council.
Yes, you should remove yourself from city of council rather than you tell the lawyer, the attorney, move your herself. I tell you, you should abide by your wish. Uh, remove yourself from the city of Westminster, please, so that you can stop creating problems. You stop exploding this city, and you should do this according to your, uh, your wish. Listen.
My decision, um, if I am not the elected mayor of the city of Westminster twenty, this coming election, uh, that's November eighth, twenty twenty-two, I will remove myself from the city council.
Peace. Yes, that's right. You should remove yourself from the city of Westminster to bring peace to our city, okay? It's same thing with your father who had escaped Vietnam, deserting the people, uh, army before the war ended. See, he is a high-ranking officer. He has deserted the army. That is, I have the truth, the proof of that. Thank you.
Address to the council.
The next speaker is Tru Bo, followed by Mai Nguyen.
Tôi biết tiếng Anh nhưng mà tôi muốn make sure là ông Nam Quang hiểu tiếng Việt. Tại vì mấy lần trước tôi họp thấy vote yes or no mà ông cũng không biết vote yes or no. Ông phải hỏi đồng viện.
I understand English, but I want to address the council in Vietnamese because I want to make sure that Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen understand, uh, what I'm saying. Because last time, or I saw that, uh, when, when he had to vote, uh, and he did not understand whether it's time to vote or to vote yes or no, uh, like his colleagues.
Hồi, hồi nãy có một cái chị nào đã nói là trash media. Tôi xin nhắc đại, cái này là đúng là trash media vì hay interview những người làm trong, trong sở, sở rách. Mà trong đó có ông cựu phó thị, phó, phó thị trưởng. Những người này là không phải phục vụ chân mà tôi biết là cứ mỗi tháng á là sáu, sáu lần họp có, có vụ gì cũng rán họp sáu lần. Mà một lần là sáu trăm đô, tức là ba ngàn sáu một tháng.
A lady said earlier tonight that it's trash media. Uh, I think that's true because your channel, or you often interview people from the sanitation department. Uh, and, and that was the former vice mayor. Um, he would have a meeting for the sanitation department six times a month, of six times a month at six hundred dollar per meeting. That will be probably six hundred dollar a month.
Vì như vậy nên thành có thể là city of Westminster bankrupt và bây giờ đương kim thị trưởng của chúng ta cũng làm trong sở rách.
And because of that, that was perhaps why the city of Westminster might be under virtual bankruptcy. Now we have our mayor, he's also with the sanitary, uh, sanitation department.
Thì đó là một cái đài vừa là interview những người làm sở rách và interview những người lên nói toàn những cái rách rưỡi không, không nói gì bổ ích cho dân chúng. Chẳng hạn như ông phó thị trưởng đương kim ngồi cùng chung với đồng viện cái người partnership là cái, cái người đó nói là, à, bây giờ không gọi con đỉ chó, à, không gọi con đỉ ngựa thì gọi con đỉ chó được không? Cái đó, một ông phó thị trưởng mà có một cái channel mà lên suối dục dân, chửi người dân khác, thì quý vị coi cái đó có được không?
Trash media is the appropriate name for that channel because it would feature or inter, uh, they would interview or people from the sanitation department, uh, like our current mayor. Uh, and then, uh, he also has a partner, his partner on his channel calling people, uh, you fuck, uh, if I cannot call you a fucking bitch, should I call you a fucking whore instead?
Và ông phó thị trưởng đã dạy còn không có một trái tim cháu ruột của ông là một người gia đen. Thì tôi bữa đó tôi dự cái lễ diễn hành, tôi thấy cô đó, cô bé đó khóc suốt mướt, khóc như mưa. Tôi mới để ý thì thật thành ra ông phó thị trưởng đã không cho cô bé đi vô xe bớt để vào cái xe diễn hành với cô em của ông ta. Thì sau khi đó có một người nào đó gọi cho ông ta, ông ta mới đem chiếc xe và chở cô bé. Thì đầu năm tôi làm được một cái chuyện phúc đức đó, tôi cũng rất là mừng.
Our vice mayor is heartless, uh, at the Tet Parade. Uh, his niece, uh, who happened to be African-American, uh, want to go on the, uh, on a parade float, uh, but he wouldn't let her and she was crying. So I was able to do a good act for the New Year. I, uh, after all that, I got her onto a, a float.
Và một điều nữa, đầu năm tôi gặp ông, tôi muốn chúc Tết cho ông và tôi hỏi là ông có còn chửi văn tục đầu năm với, với, với dân chúng hay không? Thì ông đã sai một người staff của ông lấy cái phông ghi vô mặt tôi, kêu mặt tôi mặt này, mặt nọ, mặt kia. Cái điều đó là một ông phó thị trưởng mà đi hà rách và ạ số người dân như vậy có đúng? Cái điều đó là một ông phó thị trưởng mà đi harass và assault người dân như vậy có đúng hay không?
And another thing during the, during Tet of the new year, the Lunar New Year, I ran into him and all I want to do was to wish him the best. And then he and said, or has...
Ông ta suy... Cái người staff của ông...
He asked his staff to...
harass?
To harass me.
Assault?
And to harass and assault me. Having, having that person putting a phone close to my face, I'm asking whether that is appropriate for someone as a vice mayor.
Và tôi nghe nói là kỳ này họ bỏ lên một cái agenda, họ sẽ cancel cái tượng đài quãng trị. Tôi nghĩ, tôi nhớ giống như là năm 1975, sau khi mất bên nước Cộng sản bắt Việt đã trả thù. Tức là bây giờ bà Kimberly là cái người đề nghị cái tượng đài quãng trị. Bây giờ quý vị lên, có bộ ba quý vị muốn cancel cái đó để mà trả thù. Rất là tội nghiệp các ông lính đã từng chiến đấu, giành giữ quê hương để cho chúng ta còn cái mạng sống ngày hôm nay. Và chúng ta vì thù ghét nhau, đánh qua đánh lại để cho những vị đó không được an vị. Đó là một tội rất lớn. Cái sông Hồng Hà nó không rửa được tội của ông phó thị trưởng đem cha mẹ người ta ra chửi. Mà cái này cái sông Hồng Hà tôi nghĩ không rửa hết tội của những người mà cancel cái tượng đài quãng trị này.
I heard that they placed on the agenda, on tonight's agenda items that they would disband and cancel the Quang Tri monument project. I think this is similar to what happened in 1975 after the communists taken over, retaliation. They, just retaliation. Now that you have three of you on the city council, you try to retaliate against council member Kimberly Ho for sponsoring that project. And so I feel sorry for the veterans who have sacrificed their life to protect, to protect us, protect our freedom. Your sin here, it would take more than the Hong Ha River to wash away your sin, you vice mayor.
Và chỉ có Cộng sản, chỉ có những người bắt việc Cộng sản, những người mà vô văn hóa, những người mà không có cái sự mà nhân văn mới làm những điều như vậy.
Only the North communists and people who were not raised properly by the family would do something like that.
Và ông Nam Quang cũng đã lên với ông Nguyễn Mạnh Chí giữ, nói là nhà nước, dùng cái chữ nhà nước cho tiền. Tức là ông đã bị nhiễm. Không biết là ông đã nói chuyện với lại những người Việt Cộng Cộng sản ở Việt Nam hay sao mà ông bị nhiễm độc có trong đầu. Ông dùng cái chữ nhà nước trên trash media.
And Mr. Nam Quang Nguyen along with Charlie Chi Nguyen use a term in Vietnamese called NHANNUC, nhà nước, or government. That's a term that the communists use. I don't know why he had that term in his head. Perhaps because he associate with them and so now that term got to his head.
Tôi rất là đau buồn là tôi có cái cảm, cảm nghĩ là đây là một cái thành phố Westminster đã bị chiếm bởi Cộng sản vì từ từ ngữ mà đã thu hút ra từ một ông phó thị trưởng và những cái hành xử là y chang như Việt Cộng Cộng sản trả thù nhau.
I'm saddened because it looked like our city is being taken over by the communists because we have a vice mayor who employ term and act like a communist.
The next speaker is Mai Nguyen, followed by Trong Don.
Kính chào thị trưởng Charlie Nguyễn Mạnh Chí, phó thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn, nghị viên Kimberly Ho, nghị viên Carlos Manzol, nghị viên Phammy Emi West và thành phố Westminster.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen, Councilmember Kimberly Ho, Councilmember Carlos Manzol and Councilmember Ami Fang West as well as the entire city staff.
Chúc mừng năm mới đến tất cả mọi người trong phòng họp ngày hôm nay.
Happy Lunar New Year to everyone at the meeting tonight.
Tôi tên là Xuân Mai, tôi có một đôi lời xin nói với thị trưởng và các nghị viên. Trong gia đình người Việt Nam của chúng ta cũng có cha, chú, anh của chúng ta tham dự, tham gia vào cuộc chiến Việt Nam để giữ vững quê hương.
I have a few things that I would like to share with our mayor and our council member. And now, family, as Vietnamese, we had our father, our brother who fought for freedom during the Vietnam War.
Trong cuộc chiến, cha ông ta đã đổ biết bao nhiêu xương máu và đã nằm xuống. Tôi xin thị trưởng và các nghị viên hãy nghĩ đến tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành quãng trị. Xin hãy đặt tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành quãng trị ở một nơi và các anh chiến linh chiến sĩ ở một nơi trang nghiêm để chúng ta và con cháu chúng ta luôn tưởng nhớ đến sự oai hùng của những người lính trong quân lực Việt Nam Cộng hòa.
So during the war, blood was shed, life was sacrificed to protect freedom. And because of that, I'm asking the mayor and our council member to allow the Quang Tri monument to be placed at a place that is solemn, that is holy, worthy of the sacrifice made by the, by the oven and to, and to symbolize their heroic act.
Tôi xin thưa với thị trưởng và các nghị viên ở đây. Chúng ta ai cũng có cha anh, người em, người chú của chúng ta đi trong quân đội. Thì tại sao chúng ta không nghĩ đến những sự thương đau những người đã giữ vững non sông quê hương của chúng ta? Và chúng ta có đến ngày hôm nay qua đất nước tự do này. Chúng ta hãy nghĩ lại, chúng ta hãy nghĩ đến xương máu của ông cha ta đã đổ xuống. Trong đó có gia đình của các anh, của các nghị viên đó.
So to the mayor and council member, we all have our loved ones, father, brother, relative who served and fought during the Vietnam War. Why don't we think about them, about the sacrifice that they made, the blood that they shed so that we can have our freedom and that we have a chance to be in this great country that's called America?
Chúng ta hãy nghĩ đến đi. Nghĩ đến những người lính Việt Nam Cộng hòa. Và chúng ta xin gì? Chúng ta hãy mong mọi người ở đây, các anh, các chị ở đây hãy đặt tượng đài ở một nơi trang nghiêm để chúng ta và con em của chúng ta thấp một nén nhang, luôn tưởng nhớ đến công lao, xương máu.
Let's, let's think, let's think of the sacrifice made by the member of the military of the Republic of Vietnam, military member of the Republic of Vietnam. Think of the sacrifice that they made. And, and because of that place, allow the monument to be placed at a place that is solemn, that is holy.
Từ đầu cho tới bây giờ, Xuân Mai cũng nghe rất nhiều những lời chúc tụng, những lời phải nói là không được đẹp. Chúng ta sống ở đất Mỹ này. Những người Hoa Kỳ họ sẽ nhìn thấy. Rất mong các quý vị hãy đoàn kết với nhau, hãy hàn gắn những gì đã đổ vỡ. Và xin thị trưởng, các nghị viên, phó thị trưởng hãy ngồi lại, hãy lắng nghe những tiếng nói của những người dân, tất cả người dân. Cho dù thành phố Westminster hay thành phố Garden Row, Santa Ana, chúng ta hãy đoàn kết và để cho những người Hoa Kỳ họ nhìn thấy những sự tốt đẹp của chúng ta xây dựng một đất nước Hoa Kỳ.
I have listened to thing at the council meeting tonight, thing that were nice, greeting, and also thing that are not so nice. We as Vietnamese Americans should, should come together. So because we are being watched by, by the residents here. So we need to come together, we need to heal the wounds, come together.
Xuân Mai xin có đôi lời. Và cũng rất mong thành phố của Westminster trong tương lai có một sự tốt đẹp. Tất cả mọi người hãy ngồi xuống, hàn gắn với nhau. Cho Xuân Mai xin nói một đôi lời. Và cái ngày hôm, tất cả các anh, thị trưởng, nghị viên, cái ngày ramát Tân thị trưởng, Tân nghị viên, Xuân Mai cũng có tham dự đến sớm để chúc mừng cho các anh trở thành Tân nghị viên, Tân thị trưởng. Xuân Mai đã đến rất sớm, sáu giờ đã có mặt. Nhưng rồi được ngồi ở trong phòng, được nửa tiếng không bao lâu. Lúc đó không có nón đổi, trời thì lạnh, không có vớ, không khăn quàng. Đã đứng ở ngoài sân, hai tiếng mấy đồng hồ, trời lạnh buốt để xin đến chúc mừng tất cả Tân nghị viên và thị trưởng. Nhưng không ngờ, được mời ra hỏi phòng. Xuân Mai rất buồn, đứng trời lạnh căm căm. Anh Hoàng Tấn Kỳ trong ủy ban xây dựng tượng đài có nói, Xuân Mai, em hãy cố gắng ở lại để nói, một tiếng nói là cho ủy ban xây dựng tượng đài trong cái lịch trình cho kỳ tới, cái agenda tới. Nhưng mà Xuân Mai cứ đợi mãi, đợi mãi, cả hơn hai tiếng mấy đồng hồ mới được vô phòng họp. Để rồi về đến nhà, nằm quỵ, không thức nổi. Hai tuần lễ đau nặng, không biết như thế nào. Nhưng cứ cầu xin ơn trên, cầu xin mọi người, cầu xin tất cả các nghị viên, thị trưởng ở đây. Xin cho ủy ban xây dựng tượng đài, cho cái tượng đài, cho các anh linh chiến sĩ được đặt ở một nơi mà mọi người hằng mong ước. Trong đó có thị trưởng và các nghị viên. Xin kính chào và kính chúc tất cả mọi người được khỏe mạnh, được bình an.
So I, Xuân Mai, hope that our city council member and the mayor would come together, would sit down, would unify. I had the occasion of attending the meeting where the mayor, the new mayor and new city council member was sworn in. Took me, I was here and then I was, I just want to wish them the best, but I was asked to leave. I was kicked out. I had to be outside for two hour, it was cold. I did not have a hat, I did not have a scarf. And I spent two hour there before allowing to go in. And because of that, I got sick for two weeks. But still, I pray, I pray for the council. I pray that you allow the monument we...
I'm sorry, but the time is up, mayor. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Trong Don.
Vâng, kính chào quý vị. Đây là lần đầu tiên tôi có cơ hội gặp tận hội đồng của nghị viên của thành phố Westminster.
Good evening. This will be the first time that I have a chance to address the city council of the city of Westminster.
Yeah, lời chúc mừng của tôi đến ông thị trưởng, ông phó thị trưởng Nam Quan cũng giống như là bà nghị viên Phan Quet. Vì quý vị đã được sự tín nhiệm của những cử tri ở trong những khu vực 1, khu vực 4 và thành phố Westminster.
My congratulations to Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen and Councilmember Ami Fang West. You have earned the trust of the voter of District 1 and District 4 as well as the city of, the resident of the city of Westminster.
Sự kiện mà tôi trình bày hôm nay nó là hiện ra vào năm 2020. Có lẽ thì tôi không nên nhắc lại nhưng vì cái sự tín nhiệm của cử tri đối với ông phó thị trưởng Nguyễn Nam Quan, thành điều này tôi muốn nhắc lại.
The event that I'm presenting tonight took place in 2020. I should not bring that event back but because of the trust that the resident has placed on Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen, I am bringing that event back.
Tôi tên là Đoàn Trọng, tôi là một trong những người làm phỏng viên và media có thể gần trên mười lăm năm nay tại thành phố, thành của Orange County. Tôi đã được giúp rất nhiều nghị viên, thị trưởng ở đây, ngay cả ông nghị viên Nguyễn Mạnh Chí trong những cái chương trình của tôi để giúp cho cởi mở quý vị có những cái lời nói với đồng hương trong những khi quý vị cần.
My name is Trong Don. I've been a reporter and also working in media for twenty plus years. I had fifteen years. I have on several occasions have an opportunity to help some of our council member as well as our mayor to send their message to the people in the community or the public.
Bây giờ đặt lại vấn đề là việc trước tiên trong khoảng thời gian, ông Nam Quan Nguyễn chưa còn là phó thị trưởng, là một YouTuber, ông đã có sự dụng một lời nói mới đối với cá nhân tôi. Liệu tôi có nên nói ra đó là không, là cái chữ ông chửi tôi motherfucker?
So going back to the time when Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen was yet a vice mayor and he was a YouTuber, I don't know if I should mention that, but he called me a motherfucker.
Ê Đoàn Trọng đù má mày.
And, and he said, "Fuck you, Dong Trong."
Yeah, no, it's okay. No, I, I know everybody have a right to angry to expect, you know, what the war. But today, you are present, you know, for the lot of people in your district. So I want to ask you to apologize, on war, apologize me. And another thing, I forget, and I hope you keep going with your job. But another thing, I want to use a language to mention you. Do you have the permission, you know, to some the channel, some, you know, the YouTube, allow your war? Because all my relatives in United States, friend and Belgium, they copy. And they very, you know, best attitude. And you know, currently, you know, in the ahumpa, you know, the people angry, they may do everything, including what you did for your, in your past. So I hope we cooperation with you and I hope you cooperation with the mayor. I hope cooperation with the Phan Quet. I know Mr. Carlos Manzol. I hope cooperation with the Phan Huế. I know Mr. Carlos Manzo, I interview her a lot, you know, council member whole too. So I want you, we, I forget, you know, but I think you should apologize me for everybody in my relative. And you know, so my mom is eighty, now is eighty six year old, she died. And so please, you know, say a word apologize to me and keep going with your job and we very appreciate to work together. Thank you so much.
Trước tiên tôi xin trân trọng chào thị trưởng Nguyễn Minh Chí, phó thị trưởng Nam Quang Nguyễn, council member Kimberly Ho, council member Carlos Manzo, council member Amy Phan Huế.
First of all, I would like to send my greeting to Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen, council member Kimberly Ho, council member Carlos Manzo and council member Amy Phan Huế.
Xin gửi lời chúc sức khỏe và chúc mọi điều tốt đẹp đến năm vị trong hội đồng thành phố Westminster.
I wish you good health and I wish you all the best. And that is to all of the council member of the city of Westminster.
Đây là lần đầu tiên tôi đến cuộc họp của hội đồng thành phố.
This is my first time for attending a city council meeting.
Mặc dù nhiều năm nay tôi theo dõi cuộc họp của hội đồng thành phố ở trên cái TV livestream.
Even though I have been following the city council meeting as it was being livestream for the last several years.
Thưa quý vị, sở dĩ tôi đến đây bởi vì tôi thấy kể từ ngày mà ba người dân cử mới đắc cử thì trong những cuộc họp của hội đồng thành phố có rất nhiều người đến tấn công các vị Tân dân cử.
Ladies and gentlemen, for city council member and mayor, I'm here tonight because I saw that after the election of the new mayor and two new council member. I saw that there would be a lot of people coming, attending the meeting, coming to the meeting and attacking the mayor, the new mayor and the two new council member.
Và tôi tìm hiểu thì tôi được biết hầu hết những người đó không phải là hầu hết, phần lớn không phải là cư dân của Westminster.
And as I found out, most of them are are not residents of the city of Westminster.
Và những người này, tôi có thể nói rằng họ là những người đã từng ủng hộ vận động trong cuộc tranh cử của nghị viên Kimberly Ho.
And I can tell, I can tell you that these people were people who was, who was supporting, who were the supporter of council member Kimberly Ho in her campaign for to be the mayor of the city of Westminster.
Thưa quý vị, tôi nghĩ rằng trong lúc tranh cử chúng ta có thể nói đối phương của mình nhiều điều.
I think that during an election campaign, yeah, you can, you can, you know, you can call your opponent a lot of things.
Nhưng mà khi phần lớn cử tri người ta đã chọn ai đó và đã có kết quả bầu cử thì chúng ta nên bắt tay nhau để thực hiện những cái điều tốt đẹp để xây dựng thành phố.
But once the majority of the voter have decided and have selected or elected someone. I think we should all come together and work together for the betterment of our city.
Và mỗi người ứng cử viên phải có trách nhiệm nói với những người ủng hộ viên mình, phải cư xử có văn hóa và đừng có làm cho thành phố quá mức thì giờ tốn kém tiền bạc vì những cái chuyện vô bổ vào những buổi họp, không có ích lợi cho thành phố.
And I think each candidate should have the responsibility to tell their supporter not to waste, to come to the meeting and waste cities' time, city council's time.
Tốn kém là như thế nào? Yeah, tốn kém tiền bạc và mất thời gian của thành phố.
Cities' time, cities' money.
Không ích lợi.
And say anything that doesn't benefit anyone.
Tôi đơn cử có một nghị viên của thành phố Garden Row là luôn luôn thường xuyên có mặt trong cuộc họp hội đồng Westminster và đánh phá hết người nghị viên này đến nghị viên khác.
I'm talking about a city council member from the city of Garden Row who would come to this city's council meeting and would be attacking this person and that person and certain council member.
Mà chính ông ta nói rằng là thành phố Westminster là luôn luôn sáo động, hội đồng thành phố không có đoàn kết như những thành phố khác.
He himself said that the city of Westminster always have some source of internal fighting and that the city of Westminster is not, does not come together as other cities.
Tôi nghĩ là người dân Westminster đã chọn lựa dân cử của mình và họ chịu trách nhiệm, họ thiệt thòi hay là họ được và họ có quyền phản ứng lại với những người mà họ đã tín nhiệm.
I think the residents of the city of Westminster have elected their city official and so they have the right to to address and to respond to the people who they had trust and put into office.
Còn những người ở thành phố khác, xin hãy để cho hội đồng thành phố này làm việc.
But with respect to people from outside of the city, please leave the city council member of the city alone so that they could work for the city.
Một câu chuyện cụ thể mà tôi muốn nói là lúc nãy có một người không phải ở thành phố Westminster, cái anh mặc áo vét đỏ đó, bông hoa đỏ, anh lên tố cáo phó thị trưởng Nam Quang là harass anh.
So there is one specific instance that I would like to talk about. And that would be that gentleman earlier tonight, the gentleman in the red suit. He came here to harass and to attack Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen.
Nhưng mà tôi là người chứng kiến là hôm đó anh ta gặp anh Tiến Dũng là một YouTuber ở ngoài chợ Tết.
But I, I witnessed this myself, or I saw him running into Tian Yung, a YouTuber. And he ran to Tian Yung at the Ted Festival.
Và anh ta chủ động tấn công anh Nguyễn Tiến Dũng bằng lời nói.
And he took upon himself to attack, to verbally attack Tian Yung.
Và anh ta đưa hai cái bàn tay anh lên, anh đưa ngón, hai ngón tay giữa lên rất là lâu.
Threw up both of his arm with his middle finger extend.
Miệng anh ta văng những lời tục tiểu và thô biệt, thô thiển.
And out of his mouth came a vanity.
Rồi sau đó mà miệng anh ta luôn hỏi là, anh Nam Quang đâu, phó thị trưởng Nam Quang đâu, anh ta hỏi hàng trăm lần như vậy.
And he kept on asking where's Nam Quang Nguyen, where's the Vice Mayor? Or he said that repeatedly hundreds of times.
Và sau đó anh Tiến Dũng, YouTuber mới đi tìm anh Nam Quang và nói lại cái lời của cái anh mặc áo vét đó như vậy.
And because of that, Tian Yung then went and looked for Nam Quang Nguyen and told Nam Quang Nguyen what the gentleman in the red suit had said.
Và khi anh Nam Quang đi tìm anh Tiến Dũng, tức là hai người này đi chung, rồi họ đi làm riêng thì sau đó anh Nam Quang đi tìm anh Tiến Dũng. Thì khi mà gặp anh Tiến Dũng thì anh Tiến Dũng đang quay phim cái anh mặc áo vét đỏ đó.
So Tian Yung was looking for Nam Quang Nguyen and when, you know, finally when Nam Quang Nguyen saw Tian Yung, Tiến Dũng was recording and talking to the gentleman in the man in the red suit.
Thì cái anh mặc áo vét đỏ đó, ảnh nhìn thấy Nam Quang, ảnh tới, ảnh chửi Nam Quang rất là tục tiểu.
The man in the red suit saw Nam Quang Nguyen, he came toward Nam Quang Nguyen and heard of vanity or crude language toward Nam Quang Nguyen.
Anh sắp tới anh hỏi mày có phải là phó thị trưởng không, Nam Quang, Nam Quang anh hỏi hàng trăm lần như vậy.
He, he came toward Nam Quang Nguyen and asked Nam Quang Nguyen repeatedly, hundreds of, hundreds of times, whether Nam Quang Nguyen is a Vice Mayor.
Tôi thề, tôi lấy danh dự của tôi, tôi thề, anh Nam Quang không nói một lời nào xấu dí.
I, I can swear on my honor that Nam Quang Nguyen did not say anything that was cruel and improper.
Anh Nam Quang chỉ quay phim và ảnh cười thôi thì.
Nam Quang was just filming or recording and all he did was smiling.
Và anh áo vét, ảnh nói mẹ căm hả?
The man in the red suit said, are you, are you mute?
You can give light.
And that was all.
The next speaker is Deborah Mariscal.
Deborah Mariscal, Westminster since January of 2000. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Clerks, Officers. Councilmember Kimberly Ho and Councilmember Carlos Menches. Thank you for standing up for First Amendment rights. We do have the right to speak. And I do believe that we should be allowed to have five minutes. Not everybody can say what they need to say in three minutes. So thank you very much for standing up for that. I appreciate it. I wanted to talk about some positive things to start with. First of all, congratulations to our police department for some new officers that I've been able to have a little interaction with this week. Good job. Looks like we have some good people. Appreciate that. Looks like the tep parade was a success and I hope that that brought money to some of the businesses that were, you know, that are in the area that it was held. I do hope that the city can recover the money that was spent to get that done. I think we're on a budget. When I'm on a budget, I don't go to Starbucks to get coffee, I make coffee at home. Hundred fifty thousand dollars is not a lot in our overall budget, but it's money that we probably can't really afford to lose. So I'm hoping that some of that money will be recovered. Congratulations to our police department again. Liberty Park is getting cleaned up. We have less homeless, less graffiti in there, which has been great. Now on the negative side. It really saddens me that so many people have come up tonight to speak against the council and especially the profanity that's been used. It just, it just breaks my heart. It shouldn't be that way. I mean, shouldn't we be above reproach in our, you know, in your positions? I'm expected to be that way in the position that I hold in working as an insurance agent representing the state of California. Item 6.1, in my opinion, and I apologize because I was late tonight because I worked until eight o'clock tonight. In my opinion, council members should not be double dipping in different positions. So you work on the council, you shouldn't be active in another, you know, in another thing within the city or the county. My, my opinion. 7.1, dissolving the monument. We have spent so much money and time on this. I get it. I totally get it that there are people that would like to have that. And that's great. Let them pay for it, put it on private land, good with that. As a Jew, six million people, six million Jews died in World War II. I'd love to see a monument for that, not just for the Jews that died in the Holocaust, but the homosexuals, the disabled, the gypsies. But I wouldn't expect the city to pay for it. My biggest concern as I try to spend my dollars in Westminster when I shop. The number of businesses that are leaving our city. We are not, we are not a business friendly city. So I just was over on Westminster and Golden West, so Sally's has left, Big Lots has left. I believe that Michael's is probably leaving. I don't have the answers. I'm quite honest, I don't have the answers. But we have got to do something to make up for the three or four million dollar shortage that we have just in the first quarter of this year. So what are we gonna do about that? You guys are smarter than I am. So what are we gonna do? Thank you.
So mayor, now we're gonna move on to our Zoom audience. The first speaker is Roger Mindrum. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. First, congratulations to our city manager, Ms. Cordone, and the entire staff members and our police officers and the whole community for what appeared to be a nice, successful parade and event celebrating Lunar New Year. Nice job by the MCs also. I did watch it on YouTube. So that was a nice, that was a nice show. Now, if you can get the city finances in order, that would be great. Many people are anxiously awaiting some news of revenue sources. So let's, let's get the finance gaps cleared up. I do want to say, nothing I say tonight is an accusation or a personal attack. Just my eyewitness testimony, my views, what I have seen and heard so far. This is my direct experience, not unfounded accusations. I will say how un-American it is for you to cut our First Amendment freedom of speech by forty percent. It is total horse manure and you know it. It shows that the old country is still with you, the hypocrisy is so thick with you little tyrants. This is our meeting, not your meeting. This time is for community communication, not during the day making an appointment at your office. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amy West, did you delete all comments of a Facebook post on our local politics page tonight while you were sitting there in council chambers? A resident was reading comments tonight and poof, they disappeared right in front of her. It sure looks like you did. Charlie, you stated rules which violate the First Amendment. You are proving to be a tyrant. And even when the evidence is right in front of you, you denounce it. You can't make people present evidence. That is total BS. Do you know that or are you that stupid? You are the proof of everything you ask for. Next on this agenda is 5.1, rescinding Resolution 5103. Wow, what a joke. You aren't even smart enough to know that you can't erase history. That meeting happened. That three-hour presentation happened, publicizing the crap from your propaganda minister Nam Quan. The record of that, of all his fake propaganda, the lies by Nam Quan and his cohorts, it still exists on the city archives. On video and audio, so whatever you do tonight on this subject won't make it go away. And in fact, all the statement, all the false statements, lies and propaganda did actually happen. There was evidence provided. Those words came out of Nam Quan's mouth and maybe equally came out of Charlie Nguyen's mouth, in which he got officially reprimanded for it also. That propaganda obviously worked, as Amy West so loudly proclaimed at the last meeting. Our mayor was homeless, he was homeless. Such total obvious BS. This is a joke, a very sad, unfunny joke. You three are proving to be more of an embarrassment to this city. In fact, Nam Quan is still currently spewing more lies. I've watched it on, on his YouTube. Lies and disparaging the character of his fellow council members, a direct violation of the city's code of conduct and code of ethics. Even the watered-down version that was such contentious subject from 2019. Mayor Nguyen, are you going to reprimand Nam Quan for his egregious conduct? Are you? You have yet to show me much of any character or ethics in the past four years, so I'll bet you do nothing, as usual. Like not recusing yourself in regards to the pending lawsuit by the Quan Trì Victory Foundation. So one hundred percent obvious conflict of interest, it's free speech, only one is convenient and agreeable to you. The reasons from Amy and Nam Quan about freedom of press is also. The reasons from Amy and Nam Quan about freedom of press is also BS, as no one tried to stop him, just to call out his dishonesty. Don't pretend you don't know he's doing it. But then again, you are no better than his slimy character and his ethics are on the level of the sewer. A lot of your slanderous conduct is well documented too, Charlie. So whatever you do on this rescinding fake news, it's only to make yourselves feel better about yourselves. When in fact, to the public paying attention to all this just makes you look worse. Makes you look worse than you already do. It's a bunch of crap. If you do no wrong, then people wouldn't be here with grievances against you. All these people up here talking negative against you, you've earned it. And then we have item 7.1. Nam Quan wants to disband the Quantray Monument Foundation Committee and the whole monument project. Wait, isn't canceling such a meaningful monument now subject you to a recall? You led the way and pushed to recall Mr. Monzo and Ms. Ho because of that. Oh, the hypocrisy ringing in her ears. But yes, disband, terminate and never attempt this monument again. So far, you three just...
The next speaker is Amy Walsh. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I had oral surgery yesterday, so I'm a little sore today. So I'd like to, I'd like to first off, say thank you to both Kimberly and Carlos for standing up for the First Amendment rights. I'm in shock with what I've seen this, tonight so far. The fact that... I literally have no words. That's how says a lot, because normally I have many. In regards to all the just mudslinging that has been happening this evening, you know, I really thought that it couldn't get worse, but apparently it did. You know, the last meeting, I know Amy had made a point of saying this as well as Charlie, that, you know, the reason why they wanted to lower the time for public comments is because they take up so much time of the meeting. But I also want to remind you that when you are going back and forth with your fellow councilmembers and kind of trying to grandstand against each other, that is taking up even more time than public comments. Just making sure that you're aware and you notice. Gosh, I guess it's a trend tonight, the hypocrisy. I'm sure, because I know I've had a couple messages already, that Amy apparently finds it extremely funny when I call in and make comments because she's constantly smirking and people go to the bathroom and whatnot. You know, you guys want us to respect you as councilmembers. It goes both ways. If you're not going to respect the people that are coming and speaking, you know, you can't ask us for any modicum of respect whatsoever when you're getting up 50 times in a meeting to go to the restroom, talking to each other, checking your phones. I mean, if you want the respect, then you need to earn it. And right now, you guys aren't earning any respect from anyone. And that's, I mean, clear tonight. You know, I... I understand that... How much, gosh, how do I put this? I still can't, I can't see the timer, so I don't know how much time I have left. Which I would like to make sure that in the future we have that available for the people that are speaking on Zoom. Also, I just, I can't. I was actually privy to go to another city's council meeting the other night and something happened there that would never have flown in Westminster. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Bentonhausen, because at least on that front, we know, like me and another person actually made the comment, that would have never flown in Westminster. Christian would not have stood for that. So thank you. I know you don't give many thanks from us, but thank you. I just get your... You know, I really didn't want to curse tonight, but I guess I'm not as bad as some. Really get your shit together, councilmembers. It's, it looks like a cluster F up there. I mean, you know, people, we joke, but people call Westminster council meetings a dumpster fire and that's exactly what's going on here. And I really, I really wish that the infighting would stop. And Amy, please start calling councilmember Monzo, councilmember Monzo. Not Carlos, not Monzo, not guy that sits next to me, not dude with the suit, none of that. It's councilmember Monzo, councilwoman Ho, get it right. Or step down, let someone else do it. Because obviously, you don't give two shits. That's all.
The next speaker is Emily Grant. Please unmute yourself and you may begin. Did you mean to not, you don't want to speak? If you do, please raise your hand again. Okay, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Emily Grant, Senior Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas. We're reaching out tonight to inform all customers that natural gas prices are going to be even higher than usual this January due to several unprecedented factors beyond our control. Customers may see a winter natural gas bill double or higher compared to one year ago. The high bills are a result of historically high natural gas prices in the Western United States. As you know, SoCalGas doesn't set the price for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets. SoCalGas buys natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers and the cost of buying that gas is billed to those customers with no markup, meaning SoCalGas does not profit from gas commodity prices going up. According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, or the EIA, a number of factors are contributing to higher natural gas commodity prices. Widespread below normal temperatures on lunch at the West Coast, including Washington and Oregon. High natural gas demand for heating by customers in areas with below-normal temperatures. Reduced natural gas supplies to the West Coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains. Reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the West Coast because of pipeline maintenance activities in West Texas and low natural gas storage levels on the West Coast. We really want to help our customers reduce energy bills and we encourage them to lower their thermostat three to five degrees, health permitting, install proper caulking and weather stripping, and this could save roughly 10 to 15% on heating and cooling bills. Wash your clothes in cold water. Reduce the temperature on the water heater. In fact, lowering the temperature on the water heater or setting it at 120 degrees could save up to 22% in energy costs. Limit the use of non-essential natural gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters and fireplaces. And you can visit SoCalGas.com/ManageHigherBills for more information. We also offer several ways to help income-qualified customers through our bill assistance and forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance and the Level Pay program. In addition, SoCalGas recently announced a $1 million contribution to the Gas Assistance Fund, a program that helps income-qualified customers pay their natural gas bills. And to learn more about that, and to learn more about that, please visit SoCalGas.com/Assistance. If you or a member of the community have any questions, please out to me directly. I also provided the city clerk with a one pager or one sheet of information that could be posted on any of your social media feeds or for the cities used to pass out to residents. Thank you.
The next speaker is Camila Overbeek. You may unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me, Lucy?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me begin by saying, congratulations Christine Adolfo, Chief Lignier, Vanessa and everyone else who helped make this year's Tep Parade so successful. You truly deserve all the praise and accolades possible. I was quite skeptical and I am still wondering if we will make back the money, but I am beyond proud of all of you. I did not intend on speaking tonight and before any member of this council discounts my lack of presence in chambers, know this, I would be there in person if I could. However, my child just got out of the ER and they will always take precedence. But do not mistake that for me not paying attention. Trust me, I am. Councilmember Ho and Monzo, thank you for standing up for residents. Thank you for honoring the First Amendment. Thank you for following the law. And Christian, thank you for enforcing it. Charlie, you should be ashamed. You are a sham of a mayor and do not understand the basic functions of your title. Nam Quan, I'm convinced you have no idea what is going on and people are passing you notes in the back every time you leave your seat. Amy, you have all the damn audacity. You are rude, disrespectful and have zero concept of decorum. Hell, you can't even unblock residents even though you've been called out to allow civil discourse. The three of you have no business in leadership roles. As for rescinding and to put in words that maybe Amy and Nam Quan understand, that means undoing the resolution of fake news. You two are the exact reason that resolution exists. You wouldn't know truth if it was staring you in the face. Christine and Christian, I know you're doing your best. However, it might behoove you to have the parliamentarian at all future meetings to help keep this city from further lawsuits. It's quite apparent that Charlie, Amy and Nam Quan have zero comprehension of the Brown Act or Roberts Rules of Order. The very basic rules used to have a functional, coherent, cohesive meeting. Frankly, there is no amount of training you can offer these three that will help them understand. You can explain it to them, but you cannot understand it for them. The bar for this council was already a tripping hazard in hell and Amy, Nam Quan and Charlie decided to use that bar to play limbo with the devil. There seems to be no low for you three. In closing, outside of councilmember Monzo and councilmember Ho, this council is embarrassing, disgraceful and should never be referred to as a governing body. You three are a goddamn clown show and you should apologize to every single resident.
Mayor and Council, there is no one else raising their hand on Zoom. That concludes our communications at this time.
Thank you very much.
May I just say something before you begin? Just really quick. You know, if I could request that while the public is speaking, please do not, you know, a lot of chatter over there and talking and not only is that disrespectful, but it really, you know, interfere with our concentration and of our hearing. So, you know, it happened a few times. So I'd like to, you know, ask for quiet and so that we can all pay attention to what the public is saying. Thank you.
Okay, wait, wait, let me say first.
Oh, go ahead.
And I will resume my time for you. First of all, I would like to thank you, all members of the public to come out and then speak tonight. Talking about First Amendment, we all respect you and we are, make sure that we hear you. The thing is that, you know, I can't speak for all the councilmember here, but I can speak for myself. I rejected and I don't agree with all the accusation about me tonight. Look around the room and, you know, unfortunately, at this point here, all the people who are accusing me for the things that I didn't do or the wrong reason, they're not here right now to listen to what I tried to share with them. And that is not right. I am, as a mayor, my role is to control the meeting. And when there is, you know, just like the last meeting, councilmember Mezzo asked me if I understand the English, if there is a personal attack, then I need to jump in. That's exactly what I do. And if you notice that even Tony Bu when he's talking, he start talking about councilmember Ho, that father. I tried to stop him because there is no personal attack here. We need to address the city council. That is something that we have to do. So I am stand with my, I will stand with my integrity and I'm not going to take any accusation, you know, about me. And that's what I just want to let you know. You know, you are, you have the right and I respect you for what you say. But when we don't, when we respect you, we don't say anything during the comments, that doesn't mean that we take it truly. That's a truth story. So basically, that's what I want to say. I want to thank you for coming out and speak your mind. But please understand that, you know, I'm not going to tolerate, I'm not going to take, you know, for accusation as the truth when there's no evidence to show it to me. Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for all who came out and speak and share your opinion and it's very important because that's our First Amendment and I appreciate you do that. Now, I just want to address my Vietnamese community. I was saddened, you know, to see my Vietnamese community fighting each other when we are, you know what I'm wearing today? You know what I'm wearing, right? It's called OYI to represent our Vietnamese culture. And I was embarrassed to see our Vietnamese older folks fighting against each other. I want you to share your opinion. I want to share your concern. But when we start fighting each other, that is the younger generation looking and they're embarrassed and they don't want to be around that. And as I'm speaking for the younger generation, I want to encourage you guys, as Vietnamese community, we have a lot of great characteristic. We are family-oriented. Why don't we show that to the community? Why don't we show that to other community who looking at us in the city of Westminster? Show them that how we are strong. We are fighters. We escaped from a communist regime in Vietnam. I am, as many of you guys, escaped on the fishing boat and my dad was imprisoned by the communist regime. And we understand what hardship is. We understand what silencing of our voice mean and what death mean. With that in mind, most of us came out of that and I encourage the older generation to teach us younger generation to live with respect and honor, to agree to disagree and to live in unity because when we are united together, the communists are afraid. But when we are divided, that's how they win. So I encourage you guys today, moving forward, that we have a lot of good characteristic that we can shine to our community and those around us that's looking at us. We are family-oriented. We work hard. We provide for a family with the opportunity that we have in America here to live the American dreams. And I want to encourage you guys to show that to the younger generation like me. And I just want to remind you guys to do that for us, the younger generation. I was really heartbroken. I was trying to hold my tears. I couldn't hold it because I was so sad for our Vietnamese community. So I just want to encourage you guys moving forward in the future, you know, council meeting, that you guys show the good characteristic that you have in our community. This is the city of Westminster. We're known for Los Saygad. We're known for those refugees that has escaped the communist regime for freedom. Let's show that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's time for the council, you know, to do the business. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can't. So is there any other comments before we start doing city business?
Mr. Mayor.
From council? Well, this, I thought we're...
Yes. Who first?
I was...
This is not the order. We're supposed to...
If you want to talk, then just tell me. So I call your name.
Oh, sure, okay. Thank you. Well, I just have, you know, one thing to say to Amy is that, you know, stop being preachy. You know, you're talking, when you're talking, if you're Vietnamese, then you should know that you should not be preachy or trying to teach your elderly folks when you should be learning. And I don't, I believe that's really in every culture. So, you know, I don't have a problem with people coming up here, whether they're old or young, to speak. So that's all.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just, I want to make sure we follow proper process. As I mentioned previously to the council, when we have public comment, the Brown Act does allow a brief response. What we can't have is a discussion. So we got to avoid that. But you are allowed a brief comment in response. So I think we're fine at this point. I just want to make sure everyone understands. I'm monitoring this. A brief response is appropriate, but not a discussion.
And I think that's exactly what I did, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Any other brief comments? If not, then we move on to the city business. The consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless members of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action and discussion. I'd like to go ahead and pull item 3.10 for more report on this.
A motion to approve except item 3.10?
I second.
Okay, motion to approve the rest except for item 3.10 by Councilmember Menzo. Who is the second?
Me.
Okay, second by Councilmember West.
Mayor, Charlie? Before we move on, may I have an explanation of item 3.3?
You want to pull?
You want to pull?
I'm gonna pull.
You can pull it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. No, it's just pull 3.3.
3.3 being pulled. So can you revise your motion, please, Councilmember Menzo?
I agree, motion, I made my motion to pull, excuse me. I made my motion to approve all items except 3.3 and 3.10.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. So a motion on the floor to approve all items in the consent calendar except for 3.3 and 3.10.
Thank you, Mayor. With that motion, Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Officer.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, so 3.3, Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Nguyen, go ahead.
Yes, for 3.3, I just don't know exactly why we put it on the consent calendar before you explain everything to the council.
What, we put it on the consent calendar?
Yeah.
This is a typical routine items that we bring into the council. I think it doesn't have any financial impact into the city. This is just for the developers, when they develop a property, including a major development. City staff, based on the engineering standard that adopted by the city council, request to dedicate a two and a half feet on their site. So ultimately, when that alley is fully developed, we will have 20 feet wide. So it will be adequate for trash truck and fire trucks to travel through.
So the question is, is this item go through planning department? The planning commissioner, I mean?
No, it doesn't.
So it go directly to the council? So what is the difference between that? Why it doesn't go through planning before it go to the council?
I refer to Christian, if you can answer that question.
This is a, this is a project. Someone comes to the city and they, they're, in this case, building an ADU. And as part of that approval, there's, whenever somebody does a project, it's a requirement that they dedicate this area. And so there, we're trying to process the application. And part of that is for them to dedicate this area as an easement. It's not a quick claim deed. It's just an easement, as I understand it.
That's correct.
So that if and when we have enough space to widen the alley, then the city will be able to do that. If we ever were to not, not do that eventually, that would go back to the property owner. But actually, the property owner will still likely have control over this area until the city widens it.
Correct. This is an easement only when we have the ultimate on both sides, then we widen to 20 feet.
Okay. So you moved to approve the item? I second it. So move to approve the item 3.3 by Vice Mayor Nguyen and second by Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Fan West? Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 to approve.
May I have the report, photo report on the 3.10, please?
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, Council. This is in accordance with council direction that we publish our quarterly crime statistics. As you can see, we compared quarter three with quarter four of 2022. There were slight changes in many categories. Happy to report, at least for the quarter, most crime saw significant decreases, some in the double digits. Before we get too excited about that, unfortunately, the annual comparison is also attached to this staff report. And crime compared to 2021 versus 2022 is significantly up. To be specific, violent crime was up. And this would be a year comparison, not just the quarter. And again, from 21 to 22, 52%, while property crimes are up 5.3% overall. If you have any questions about these statistics, I'd be happy to answer them. You will see these statistics again in the next few months. We are working on our annual report, which will capture all of this data plus much, much more. And it will be presented to council. However, it's going to take us a few months to make sure we capture all the accurate data, prepare it, publish it, and present it to council.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you, Councilmember West and Mayor. Do you have any initial, you know, kind of like attest to the reasoning for the increase? As much as it is, I mean, just a general, just general answer, maybe?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, very complicated answer.
Yeah.
And some of it is speculation. But we saw in law enforcement, we see we, in law enforcement, we saw significant increases after props 4757 were removed by the state legislature. From that time on, California Plea Chiefs Association has been trying to reinstate those propositions. But we've been met with resistance and have not been successful. That would be the start of it, but there are a lot of other reasons. We're seeing people will get out with very little or no bail and they're able to reoffend. We're seeing light sentencing. We are seeing a shortage in law enforcement resources, is all the council is aware of. It's hard to get qualified candidates to come onto the department, fully trained police officers, get them out on the street. And this is something that's not just here in Westminster, but that's a nationwide problem right now. So there's, and many other reasons. I'm just trying to be general, but there are a lot of reasons.
Yeah, I know. I just kind of wanted, I knew that, but I just wanted you to, for the public's purpose, to kind of reaffirm some of those reasons. And I know we've had some recent hires of few new officers and we're, but we're still not where we need to be, fully staffed, correct?
That is correct.
Right. Do you see any, and do you see any things that we as a council can do for the police department? Be help in the situation?
Well, there's always things council can do, but there's also financial limitations. The solutions to combating crime unfortunately are expensive. They're also personnel driven. For each bad guy to apprehend them, you need a good guy, if you will, when we're short-staffed and we can't do progressive enforcement. That is a drawback. Doesn't help with crime. But that said, there are financial limitations when you say, is there anything we can do as far as council goes? If you had an unlimited budget, I'd have a very long list for you, sir.
All right, I appreciate you, Chief. Thank you.
Chief, I have a question regarding, I realize every area is increased, right? In crimes, violence, homicide, robbery, property crime, burglary, stolen vehicle, arson. All of it is increased. And then I'm looking at rape. I mean, it seems like everything should increase the same. So can you explain to me the decrease there?
Yes. I believe you're referring to year-to-date statistics.
Yes.
21 through 22. In the year 2021, we had 31 rapes in the city. And in year 2022, we, that number was decreased by 19 for almost a 39% reduction. I cannot explain that.
Hmm, okay.
There were no major arrests of like a serial rapist to where we can go, aha, this man we think is responsible for 15 rapes and we got him. There was nothing like that. There's nothing I can put my finger on, on why they're less. We do know that most rapes are not reported. I can't tell you on how many that is. But that would probably also be the case in 2021. So.
Right. You know, it's unfortunate with rape is horrible, but what we want to encourage people is not to feel like afraid or a victim where they have to live with, you know, being assaulted. I don't care if you're a man or a woman, but if you're assaulted, we encourage them to call 911 if they can and report it because we are here for you and you should never suffer alone. And I just want to encourage, you know, the resident of Westminster to do that if they're struggling with that.
Read.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Otherwise, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move to approve by Mayor Nguyen and second by Councilmember Menzo. Please, roll a call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve that item, Mayor.
Okay, 5.1, consider adoption of a resolution to rescind. Resolution number 5103, denouncing fake news. And this put up by Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen and Councilmember Amy Fan West. I would like to, your time to, for both of you, who want to speak first?
Mayor Nguyen, I am going to say why we rescind the fake news resolution. On February 23rd, 2022, the Westminster City Council, on a split 3 to 2 vote, passed a resolution sponsored by customer title to denounce fake news in Westminster. This so-called resolution is nothing more than an attempt to exact personal revenge against my media organization, Trust Media Network, and me, who have been exposing numerous strongdoings by various members of this previous city council. Instead of working together to move the city forward and devoting on issues Westminster resident care about, this resolution was an exercise in an abuse of power by divided city council in squandering taxpayers' money and burning valuable staff resources. All of this is to carry out a vindictive agenda, causing turmoil and division in the city and the Vietnamese community. This resolution failed to even distinguish which news from opinions or the difference between personal views and issues analysis, which is the highest form of protected speech enshrined in First Amendment of the United States Constitution. It was a desperate attempt to gag political opponents for speaking the hard truth and for exposing the misdeeds of the council majority at that time. As passed, this resolution was full of baseless suppositions, unsubstantiated accusation, bias, paraphrase, false speculation, and outright lies. At the time of its introduction last year, I have called all the proponents of this resolution to present actual and specific citation and evidence of what was said were false. None was offered in response. As an established broadcaster of current events, serving over 500,000 regular subscribers and viewers, the Trust Media Network and I stand by the contents of all the videos my opponents on and off this council has denounced in their frivolous resolution. The information exposing the misdeeds of certain members of this council at that time was solid. And the Trust Media Network and I are proud of tremendous support and feedback from the viewing public, not only in Westminster, but worldwide. These types of abuse of power as taxpayers expense must stop. This so-called resolution was nothing more than an attack on the right to free speech. And it was an American. As elected public official, we should expect to be held accountable for our actions by the voting public, for good or for bad. I ask for second and a yes vote on my motion to rescind this so-called fake news resolution. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say a word?
Yes, please.
Thank you. You know, I never seen in any government, from state level, from federal, get involved in calling or silencing media of free speech. I have never seen anything like that. So for us to get involved, spending time and resource to silence someone, it's unbelievable. Now, this is the thing, I believe the resident of Westminster, they are smart. They can choose who to listen to and who not. And they've done it. And I believe in the resident of Westminster to make that decision for themselves. And we as the council board should never silence which media is fake and which is not because I trust the people, they're smart enough to discern for themselves what they want to listen to and what's right from wrong. And if we have to get involved as a body, government body, that is restriction on silencing media. And that's not appropriate. So I motion to move this forward.
Before anybody goes forward, I have a couple, I have a couple of comments. It appears that Councilmember West and Vice Mayor Nguyen don't really understand this resolution. This resolution is just saying that fake news is wrong. In no way, shape, or form is this resolution saying that you can't continue to say what you want on any media outlet. It's not silencing you in any such way at all. It's plainly just saying that, that the council majority, the pastors, was just saying that fake news was detrimental to the community, especially the Vietnamese community, who doesn't understand the English language as well. That's all it was saying. And by your comments. That's all it was saying. And by your comments, it's clear that you don't understand this resolution. And I'm not done, so please don't interrupt. Is that in interrupt you guys when you were speaking? This with the things-
Interrupt you? Nobody.
No, I said, please don't. I said, please do not. This, some of the stuff that was, that was being said by then, if prior to, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen, um, being elected, some of the things that I've, that I've heard that was coming out of his, his media outlet was downright dangerous, especially to me. There's a lot, I, I can take it, you know, like I said, if you're elected, uh, to be a, uh, elected official, you gotta take the good and the bad criticism, and I can take it. But the thing that, that bothered me the most out of all the, all the fake and propaganda and, you know, stuff that was being said by Mr. Mr. Nam Nguyen at the time. The one that I, that I video that really bothered me was when there was Mr. Nam and his, uh, his psychic, uh, Kino stating that I wanted to knock down the, the statue of the general on Bosa. And then when I saw the video of a gentleman who said he traveled from, you know, somewhere up north down here, saying that he would give up his life to defend it. You know how dangerous that is to me and my family, Mr. Mr. Nguyen? Do you know that? And that came out of your media. And, and Westminster, because it appears that, um, uh, Councilmember West not familiar with the political turmoil in the city. Fake news, all these accusations in our city has been a cancer for many years to the Vietnamese people here in the city of Westminster. And it appears that Mr. Nguyen, Nam Nguyen, at the time, before he was Vice Mayor, is, has a lot to, has pretty much involved in a lot of it with some of his, uh, partners that he, that he, you know, partners up with. And to me, being a non-Vietnamese resident of this city, is to me, that's extremely sad to see Vietnamese folks taking advantage of Vietnamese folks in that manner, to, to totally sit there and manipulate, manipulate them, brainwash them, hide the truth, totally spin the truth completely of what's going on. And to me, that is extremely sad for me to see that, being a non-Vietnamese, uh, resident of the city. And by you guys rescinding a resolution saying that fake news is detrimental to the city, is in essence saying that you can want to continue to be, uh, to hurt the Vietnamese people. This resolution in no way, shape, or form is prohibiting anybody from saying what they want to say in any media outlet. No way, shape, or form at all. So I don't understand why you guys are saying that, that this is freedom, uh, denouncing freedom of speech. This is not preventing you to keep saying what you want to say. Nobody can stop anybody to say what they want to say. No resolution, nothing is going to stop you from saying what you want to say. This is simply just saying that fake news is bad for the community. That's all it's saying. But if you guys agree with that, I mean, I'd like to see you explain that away to the Vietnamese community. Say, oh, we want to keep saying, we want to keep telling you lies. So, but go ahead and do what you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, so, you know, I just want to address, you know, I know our Vietnamese community, they are smart. You know, we can, we know what is fake news and what's not. And for, for another member to say, you know, to underestimate our Vietnamese community, I think that's a shame. Now, the thing is that with this, when would it stop? Would we start calling voice of OC fake news now because we don't agree with it? Or should we label OC register fake news? Or should we even from the diocese here, the council saying LA register, LA, uh, time is fake news? That is not our job as the council member body here. Our job is to make laws in the city here, to help the businesses, to help the resident, to help those who live in the city here, to fix roads, streets, and to beautify our city and move our city forward. And so the thing is that, number one, I want to applaud our Vietnamese community. We are smart people. We're not dumb. So we're smart. We can make decision for ourselves who we want to watch and who we want to listen to. And number two, this diocese should never, never call a news outlet fake news or silencing them. They have the free speech. And I think I motion, uh, Mayor.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember, uh, Manzo.
This is, this is-
But you have a chance to, to express it. I'd like to ask, uh, Councilmember Ho.
I think I'm a whole.
Yeah.
Let me give you a second here because I'm going to say what I gotta say. Because this is, you don't understand, Councilmember West, there is specific items. There's no way here, obviously you didn't read it. You didn't read it. You didn't read.
But you did.
You didn't read it. You're the, yes, you did. You did not read this resolution because in here, there is nine-
This diocese should never get involved in calling-
Read the resolution. Read the resolution. There are numbered here. There's nothing about the Orange County Register. Did you read the resolution? Obviously not. There's, they're numbered here. And as a matter of fact, since we have Mr. Vice Mayor Nguyen here.
I'm finished.
Vice Mayor Nguyen, I want to ask you personally, where did you get this information? Where did you hear this information that I wanted to knock down the, the general statue? May I ask, can you, now that you're here, where did you get this information? Where did you get? Where'd you get? Now, where'd you get this information?
You have no chance. I have not got a chance to talk.
Correct, correct.
And Councilmember has not got a chance to talk. And I'd like to have Councilmember go, um, have the opportunity to, to express her mind.
Thank you. If I may, uh, request, because this happened so many times. If we could have the, uh, uh, city manager, assistant city manager, go over the decorum with Miss, um, Councilwoman Amy West, please. Um, so I think there's lack decorum and I just think we need to go over and speak about that, um, more, in more detail. Because I don't think it's helped. Go ahead.
Attorney want to speak?
Let me just speak to that. The, the mayor runs the meeting. And what needs to occur is actually, council members, that the best thing to do would be to wait until you're acknowledged by the mayor. Whoever has the floor should be the one allowed to speak until that time is relinquished. Then the mayor will acknowledge another person.
Thank you.
Best way to handle it.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Okay, so, um, what I want to say is, I, um, just want to, um, um, confirm, shall I say, I'm not going to say that, um, ditto everything that, uh, Councilmember Monzo has said. But, you know, it does, uh, it is kind of, it's very clear to me that, um, the, uh, author of this agenda, the, the two, um, Vice Mayor Nam Quang, as well as Councilwoman, uh, Amy West, do not understand fully what this agenda or when you say you want to rescind, uh, this resolution. So I would suggest, um, I, I, unfortunately, I need to kind of go over, uh, just some, to make some points, uh, clear. Resolution Number Five-One-Oh-Three. If you look at the resolution that was passed, um, it, it stated very clearly, it is important for the city, the city council to take a strong stand against the concept of fake news and against the fake news that has recently been spread. So this, uh, in reference to the attached resolution, um, and you have it in your, in your notebook. So if you read through that with me, I can, I'd like to point out, um, and that was, um, March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Westminster, does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, the spread of fake news creates substantial turmoil in the Vietnamese community in Westminster. By adopting this resolution, the city council affirmly, uh, affirmatively states that the, the false statements referenced in the recitals constitute fake news. It is entirely false information, which is being spread to, to serve private political purposes and which significantly damages and misleads our community. Section two, the city council commits to denouncing fake news. By adopting this resolution, the city firmly states that it does not condone the spreading of fake news. It is false, dishonest, selfish behavior, which will only result in damage of, to our community as a whole. For this reason, the city council finds it necessary and prudent to declare its strong disapproval of any fake news. Section three, the following items are examples, and clearly stated examples, um, of fake news which is being spread in our city in those recent months, uh, leading up to March twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two and is harming to our community and which the city council condemns. The following reports of fake news are hereby debunked as follows. So it's very specifically stating, uh, why we're passing this resolution. And so by rescinding, you're saying that you condone, um, fake news and that, hmm. So, uh, you, you know, I want to go on to, to, to talk about the debunking of, um, the news that, that we actually debunked and, and that, that had passed in this resolution. Uh, and it is attached. I'll name a few. Number one is fake news that Nam Quang made a statement, um, that Councilman, I'm reading the background here. I'm not making any of it up. It's in the resolution. Councilwoman Ho conspired with Vice Mayor at the time, uh, Monzo, and Councilwoman Taido to prosecute Venerable Vi N Lee at the Abbot Di Ungu Temple for giving Mayor Ta a kickback for the land sale of Di Ungu Temple. So the actual fact stated here, um, is that no one has ever expressed any intent to investigate the temple or the abbot or try and have the city take over the property. Um, and this fact was confirmed by the interim city manager at the time, Christine Corden, during a city council meeting on February ninth, which is before passing this resolution, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. When she stated, the city has no plans to investigate the land sale to Di Ungu Temple. So that is debunking that news. And number two, uh, fake news, number two, Nam Quang states that, um, Mr. Carlos Monzo, Councilman, Councilman or Vice Mayor at the time, uh, Monzo is giving the Vietnamese Buddhist temple, uh, in Westminster too much trouble and did not vote to allow Di Ungu Temple to build a wall. The actual facts is that Vice Mayor Carlos Monzo is a strong supporter of the Vietnamese community. He initiated, eh, the Westminster resolution to denounce anti-Asian hate. There is no evidence that Vice Mayor Monzo has ever harassed or ridiculed the Vietnamese Buddhists in Westminster. And number three, fake news, I'm just kind of, um, you know, summarizing, um. So, you know, I mean, it goes on to list, um, all the way up to eight, uh, or actually ten examples. And these are like, including myself, um, there were fake news about me, um, turning the Di Ungu temple into a brothel. And so, you know, this is what the, this resolution is all about. When it was already confirmed, the actual facts were, no, I did not have any intention whatsoever uh, to turn it into a brothel and there's never been evidence. And it is sitting to this day is not a brothel, still a temple. So, um, so I just want to say, the Resolution Five-One-Oh-Three, denouncing fake news, it doesn't impede on the freedom of the press. It seems like, you know, you want to believe what you want to believe. But if, think again, the press can say, as I heard Councilmember Monzo said earlier, yes, they can say whatever they want to say. This resolution does not stop the press. By passing and keeping this resolution, denouncing fake news, you vow to your voters that you won't lie and spread fake news. And council members should be held to a higher standard. It should tell you, if you vote to rescind, it would tell your voters about you that you want to support fake news. Okay, so Vice Mayor Nam Quang is, he's now a Vice Mayor, is also a YouTuber. And this agenda is to put on, is actually put on by him and, and basically, since there has to be a second, Councilwoman, uh, Amy West, um, is the second person. And so that he could continue telling fake news and sensationalize news to provoke the public interest and excitement at the expense of accuracy. How sad. Why are we sitting? This is a waste of time. This particular agenda is a waste of time. I know many honorable YouTubers. Let me tell you. Not every YouTuber is like this, okay? So, telling fake news, while I know, we know, it is not illegal. It is unethical. However, it is unethical. I believe our council members must be held to a higher standard. By rescinding this resolution, again, we are telling, or shall you say, shall I say, you are giving yourself the okay to lie to tell fake news. So I definitely would vote no to rescind. And if you vote yes to rescind, that's what you're telling yourself. You're, you're trying to make yourself feel better when you make fake news, when you create fake news to sensationalize, to get, um, the, uh, what is it? The thumbs up or the, uh, viewership that you need to get. I, I, I find that there's something wrong with that and I'd like to talk to the city attorney, maybe at a later time. Um, I won't take the time today, but how can a person on the council be using the council in such a way? Uh, using our news and creating fake news and sensationalize, you know, news and that, and making money while doing that?
Uh, excuse me, are you, are you, are you talking about this item or are you talking about something else? I'm going to stop it.
At a later time.
Yes, but later time, then don't go into it, please.
No, I'm not. I did say if you were listening.
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate that you, you guys, you know, talk, you know, about what you think it is. Uh, I just want to come back to, uh, Councilmember, uh, Ho. You know, I, we all respect each other votes. So, you know, however you vote, you vote yes, you vote no, is your, um, is your decision, okay? So don't, don't try to put people, uh, you know, you vote yes, you vote no, this is that. I don't, I don't appreciate that. Now, it's my turn to, to speak about this one. I was here when this resolution, uh, the vote was three to two. Okay, we know, we know why it is. And I, let me tell you, okay, maybe that, uh, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen was not there at the time and Councilmember West wasn't there at the time, but I was there. Now, this resolution was built based on the accusation of a lot of people, not Nam Quang alone. We spent three hours talking about this by one councilman, by one council member, and then followed with the vote three-two. You know, I, I think that this is something that we, just like Councilmember West said, we as the council member, about a government body here, we shouldn't do that. If you or anyone have the problem with that particular, um, um, media outlet, you are free to go and challenge them. You are free. Don't get the, the city involved. And so that's, I know that you, both of you already have two times talking about it and you have a very long, uh, speech about it. So at this point here, uh, do we have a, a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, I motion it to move forward.
I believe that motion is by, uh, Vice, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen and you second. I believe that motion is by Vice Mayor Nguyen and you second it.
Yes.
Correct.
Just for process terms, I mean, can we let Councilmember West know what the proper way to make a motion is? Your motion either to approve or to deny not to move forward? So it's one or the other?
No, with the Vice Mayor is the one who make a motion, what's your motion?
My motion is, I I move to rescind the fake news resolution.
Resolution number five one oh three.
I second it.
Let me, just what we have.
Yes, but, sorry.
Well, let me just say, on the agenda is a resolution that would rescind. So it would be a motion to approve the resolution.
Right, yes.
Rescinding resolution number fifty one oh three.
Yes, and move to approve. And before we move on to vote, I just want to make it clear that whatever the result of the vote is turned out, there is absolutely no impact on my business. That's what I want to clear.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor, please go to vote.
Thank you, and that motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Fan West. And that is to adopt a resolution entitled the Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of City of Westminster, California, rescinding resolution number five one zero three regarding the denouncing of fake news. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three two, Mayor.
Okay, five six point one, moving on is the appointment of council members to represent the city on various government agency boards for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. So at this point here, I know that I'd like to, I am not exactly sure how we are going to do that, but I know that our city managers, do you have any preference on this?
In the past, the way, in the past, the way we've done this is we just go down the line or the the chart of all the different agencies. And if there's one that interests you, you just let the rest of the council know. That's how we've done it in the past. And with the exception of the Orange County Fire Authority one, that needs, that requires a separate resolution adoption, but at the end you would approve the slate in one motion. So, I guess, yeah.
And to assist the mayor and council, the last page of the staff report is actually a list of all the various government agencies and we can follow that if you'd like.
My understanding is that for certain board that the mayor is the one who represent the council.
So, but so Mayor, so we'll just go down the list. So Southern California Association of Governments and Orange County Council of Governments. So Orange County Council of Governments requires a delegate and an alternate. And the person that's appointed to that also is the appointment to SCAG. I don't know why the, interestingly enough, the appointees look different on the chart, but it's technically the same person.
Okay, let's go with the Orange County Council of Government for that one. Anybody wants to give that one?
So can we make?
For the first one.
So, yes, so you, you can, you can nominate yourself. So in the past, when it comes to these, you don't normally nominate each other. You just express your own interest in a board that you would want to be a part of. Keep in mind the schedule of those meetings. I'll let you know historically, the Orange County Council of Governments and SCAG has generally been the mayor that's done it in the past, if that helps. And I can, I can let you know what's, you know, what the, what's been done in the past, if that really helps.
Okay, for Orange County Council of Government, I can take that if nobody wants that one. And for the Southern California Association and Government, as well as the Orange County Fire Authority, I know that the mayor that was there to represent us for.
Mayor, mayor. Well, so we'll do, we will do OCFA after because that's the one that is a separate
Oh, I see.
resolution. So, so let's just go with Orange County Council of Governments and SCAG. So Mayor, you're interested in that one?
Right.
Okay, is any other council member interested or? No, okay, perfect. So I don't, all right, so.
Or if you want, I can be an alternate.
You'd like to be the alternate and the rest of the council is okay with that?
We are talking about Southern California Association.
Yeah, it would be OCAG and SCAG, which is going to be ultimately the same person.
Okay, the next one is Orange County Public Library.
A public library.
The next one, okay. Next one is Orange County Public Library Advisory Board.
So basically, what is, what is that about?
So in the, I'll just kind of read that, makes it easier for you. So the Orange County Public Library, they only meet, I believe, four times a year. The, let's see. So it is created by the county. The Library Advisory Board has twenty-six members comprised of twenty-four city council members and two county supervisors. The Library Advisory Board meets three times a year and acts in advisory capacity, reviewing the OC Public Library's budgets, operations and policy decisions and making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So that one in particular of interest to the city, we have obviously the Westminster Library, which is run through the county, so that that would be the interest.
You have a approximate timeframe that they're meeting so that the council, you know, would think, would like to.
They meet, so they meet January, May, October. So not often.
The time.
Usually, usually in the afternoon, I've seen their agendas come out where they're meeting at like three thirty, four thirty in the afternoon.
So if nobody on the council wants to be in there, no, I am interested.
Okay, and then alternate?
Alternate.
I'll be the alternative.
Okay, all right.
All right, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. Sure, I would like to be on it. Anybody else? No, okay, that one does not have an alternate, so. Okay, then. Public Cable Television Authority?
I'm on it and I'd like to continue.
Okay, and then we just need one more.
I would be an alternate.
So, so it's actually two delegates, no alternate, so you would both be at the meetings, okay? Okay, Santa Ana River Flood Control Protection Agency?
Fairly on it, but nobody wants to do it, I can continue.
Alternate?
I can be alternate.
Water Advisory Committee of Orange County? Water's a hot topic.
The time is, for me, the time is.
Yeah.
Well, if not, then I will volunteer for it. As a mayor, I will take responsibility, I will be responsible for it.
Want to make sure it doesn't conflict maybe with some of the other, you know?
Oh, for other volunteers, for other council volunteers, so I don't have to take it, but I will, if no, nobody wants.
We also nominate the public if.
No, these are, these are all, these have, these are designated for city council members to serve on them.
So, for this one, we don't need to have the alternate, so I will volunteer for that. So next one is West Orange County Water Board.
I would like to be on it, Mayor.
All right.
Anybody for the alternate?
Yeah, I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go down the list real quick for everyone and then you'll just have to make a motion in a second for it, but let's recap. Let's recap this list. So for Orange County Council of Governments and SCAG, the delegate will be Mayor Nguyen, the alternate will be Councilmember Fan West. For the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, the delegate will be Vice Mayor Nguyen and the alternate will be Councilmember Manzo. For the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, the board trustee will be Councilmember Fan West. For the Public Cable Television Authority or PCTA, the delegate will be Councilmember Ho and Vice Mayor Nguyen. Santa Ana River Flood Control Protection Agency, delegate will be Councilmember Manzo, alternate will be Mayor Nguyen. The Water Advisory Committee of Orange County, the delegate will be Mayor Nguyen. And the West Orange County Water Board, the delegate will be Councilmember Fan West with the alternate being Councilmember Manzo. Are there any changes?
Can you let us know for SCAGs, when is the meeting? It says monthly, what day and time is that?
They, the board, the clerk of that board will make that determination. It's not set, so you will, when, when an agenda comes out and a meeting is scheduled, you'll get an email.
Perfect, thank you.
And just as FYI, the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board does have a meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Say that again, is that the library?
Yes.
Okay, where, where is, is the meeting?
That's just great.
So, it is. It is at four PM at the library headquarters. I'll send you the address, but it's at four, from four to five PM.
And that's me, right?
No, 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 that's Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Oh, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so.
You just need a motion in a second.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Nguyen and second by Councilmember West, real quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Fan West. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
So, yeah, so at this time, you have a resolution that you need to adopt for the Orange County Fire Authority. So just, you just need to select a delegate.
I'd like to go for that one because it's a famous mayor that did that before.
So you just need to make a motion in a second to adopt the resolution.
I move.
When you say somebody else, do you need an alternate?
Oh, no, there's no alternate, there's no alternate.
I motion.
You motion it?
Yes.
I second it.
So a motion by Councilmember West and second by Vice Mayor Nguyen.
That is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, designating and appointing its representative to the Orange County Fire Authority's Board of Directors. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Are we done with it, with, with that? All right, thank you very much. So next item is Commission and Committees Items. Seven point one, request to consider disbanding and dissolving the Quang Chi Monument Committee and terminate the Quang Chi Monument Projects. And this was put up by Vice Mayor Nguyen and Councilmember West. So who's, who want to go first?
I would like to go first.
Okay.
So for this Quang Chi QT Committees, is this is an ongoing issue that caused so much divided in the community. So this is what I want to, you know, to resolve it. Okay, here you go.
I believe that this one has two different items. One is for the, consider request of disband and dissolve the Quang Chi Monument Committee. And the second one is consider termination of the city's Quang Chi Monument. Should we go ahead, meet the city attorney? Should we go ahead and discuss the first one first?
Yeah, you can discuss them separately or if you wanted, you, you could make one motion.
Okay. So go ahead.
I motion.
What was the reason for Mr. Nam Quang, Vice Mayor Nam Quang?
What?
What was your, you were, I didn't hear your reason why you wanted to disband it?
Okay, you're going to know the reason, you know, after my speech, okay? Councilman Manzo, Councilman Manzo. Everything is in here. Okay. This committee was created, this committee, QT Committee, I mean, was created by a split vote, three to two, city council from the previous council majority that wanted to score political points and exact personal revenge. This committee was not representative of the Westminster community, nor the Vietnamese community, making up primarily of opponents and critics of the QT Victory Foundation. In its eighteen months existence, this committee was the source of continuous infighting, allegation, a brown act violation, racial bias, internal conflicts, even from among its membership. That have caused so much division and criticism from Westminster residents. Now I'm talking about the financial and political burden on Westminster. Since the creation of this QT Committee in July twenty twenty-one, I would like to know how much it has got Westminster in terms of dollars amount for staffing the committee's work. How many hours the city staff and legal consultation time to prepare reports, attend meetings and staff this committee and its public hearings? The city council is at an impasse and there is no popular support for the monument, which is too big in size to be placed in any city park. How many times and hours that past and present city council have devoted to this committee's monument project without a location? Resolution. Westminster residents have strongly spoken against this monument for many reasons and this project has caused a lot of friction on and off the city council for over a year now. Comments on the current QT monument situation. I am supportive of any project or monument that honor the bravery and heroism of South Vietnamese military and its allies, especially the US military. But this monument project is an, this monument project is a noble and worthy project and I completely support it in concept and objective. The committee to build this second, I have to emphasize, this second QT monuments has got too much resource for Westminster while creating ongoing friction among residents and members of the council. This has got to stop. The three previous monuments currently located, you know, at Freedom Park, not to mention the first QT monuments in San Jose, were built by private groups and foundations. Those monuments was successfully built and unveiled, did not require any creation of the city commission or committee to be successful. In fact, those monuments were built in record time and cost the city no our very little tax dollar. There is no good reason for QT committee to be created in first place when its members could create it its own private organization. its own private organization to achieve the same goal with constraint of state meeting laws and filing requirements for 7,000, 1,000 of tax dollars, tax dollars. After one and a half year, this city created QT Committee despite the best effort of its members. And I can appreciate their hard work, have not had any progress in getting support for public location despite numerous city council meetings and angry debates on this subject. These council meeting have become counterproductive and a waste of further taxpayer dollars while there clearly is no support for the monument being placed at any city-owned public park. Recommendation and action to stop the financial and political pain on the city and on the committee members who have been button their heads against the wall on this project, I ask the council dissolve this QT Committee. This council needs to stop the financial bleeding by ending the work of this committee after 18 months' long continuously deadlock and turmoil. This QT Committee can do all the work and has a lot of more flexibility and its activity by reorganizing itself as a private entity, just like all the previous groups that have successfully built their own, you know, monuments, but without causing so much burden on the city taxpayers. I could encourage the committees, the committee members to go private, which will still give the group every opportunity to apply for and continue with the monument project, but without restriction of laws and regulations for being a government entity. They can do everything and more for going private with this monument project. I also strongly suggest that and encourage the committee members to reach out to the QT Victory Foundation, the first group among other residents and leaders of the community to work on a modern project that really is inclusive and having the support of the community. Obviously, it does not have that right now. With the, with the new year, it is due time to close the chapter on this issue and start a new chapter with the monument in the shared spirit of hope, unity, and progress. Thank you.
Councilmember West?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, to be honest with you, this committee has caused a lot of money to the city because every meeting, we have to pay staff to be here. And as you know, you know, we are trying to recover from our city, basically to move our city forward. And also, I believe that this committee has its purpose already. It's done its purpose. And I think it's important to save the city money, time, and resources. And I agree with Vice Mayor. So I motion to move, to adopt this resolution.
Before, before that, I'd like to have Councilmember Menzo and Councilmember Ho want to go first.
Councilmember Ho can go first.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Ho.
Vice Mayor Nam Quang, being that this is your agenda, I don't know how to, I know I can ask you to recuse yourself because it is your agenda. You are part of a tight-knit group with the Van Tran Group QT Committee, Community with the QT Monument, the first one, and therefore you are biased. You should not place such an agenda to cancel or disband. I think that would just be totally unethical, dishonest, to say the least. So you, do you know how many hours? You have not spent a day on this agenda. We have never brought this agenda on since you've been elected, since you've been on the dais. And Councilwoman Amy West as well. So to just follow someone and say, yes, I second, is what you do. So you disregard, you know, the veterans who've worked really hard and all those people. Not to say that, I'm not saying that you know, changes could not be made, but you know, if you have any regard for people and their time and their efforts been put into this, you should you, you know, at least have or listen or to some of the deliberations that we've had. So far, we've had none since you've been on the council. How many hours? You mentioned that there's a lot of hours. How many hours? And how much money? You said you want to ask staff, yet you already put it on, put on the agenda to disband or to dissolve. And so you really don't know because you just want to cancel this QT monument. And so, bottom line is because you are biased. So, you know, as I look at this, I have to look at the bigger picture of things. Since you've both been on the council so far, you know, you count with your fingers how many times? Two? I won't count December 14th. So this is your second time. You changed the start time and end, ending time of our meetings because you want to be home.
Councilmember Ho, would you please address the item here, 7.1?
Thank you.
We know, we know that we already make decision on that.
Making a, I mean, it has something to do with this item. Yes.
But then please.
You bring up the old item.
Yes.
No, I'm, it is the big picture.
Changing the time.
Excuse me, you know, decorum, please, okay? You are not in charge. He is.
I know, but why you?
No, you are not in charge, Mayor. He is.
Yes.
Your mayor.
Please. So I, I'd like to ask you to go ahead and address the 7.1, please.
Well, city, city attorney, I'm making a point. I'm making a point.
Councilmembers should be free to make comments if they tie it to the agenda.
Yeah, and they do. And she did, she will, and I will, okay? So, so basically, you changed the public speaking time. And, you know, and I'm making just general statements and you want to cancel the QT monument led by our city. You want to rescind Resolution 501, 5103. I know you're doing this because you think you can because you have the majority. I want you to have a heart. I want you to think deeper. I want you to at least hear, hear out the community, hear the QT Monument Committee, and let them present a new image or the, the new image that they were gonna, actually, they're about to have a meeting and because of the Ted Parade that that's been delayed. So I understand that delay. I want you to think about your voters and your constituents, okay? Don't think about yourself. So I just want to say that I understand you're doing this because you, you want to, and you're doing this to get back. You are part of the Van Tran Group. And so I, I think it's highly unethical that you are putting this item. It's despicable, your actions. Mayor, you know, as we remember, all of us agree, we want to respect each other, respect the city, move the city forward.
Sorry, can I, can I ask you to retain your speech right now? Let's finish. Hold on, then I will call you, okay?
Okay. Thank you. I'm finished.
Finished, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So as I promised on day one in my swearing-in, I have always said, bringing respect back to our city, bring respect back to this community, bring the respect back to those who call Westminster their home and doing business here. And we have do housekeeping in the last, this is the third council meeting, and we all agree to move our city forward. Saving time and resources is what we need to do, and that's what my promise and have always stayed true to it. And I will continue to stay true to the next four years. Thank you.
Councilmember Menzo?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember West, I'm sure, hopefully you'll get to know me as the time goes on. And I'm not here to pick a fight with anybody, but it seems to me that just that, an advice is maybe try to be respectful of others. And you're constantly interrupting folks, other council members. You're constantly speaking out of turn and, and I mean, we, I had, I had, when I came on here, I had to, you know, take a step back and learn. Hopefully that, you know, you can do that as well. It's hard for me to to argue some of the things that's been said here. The fact of the matter is, as Councilmember West made a statement earlier about how it breaks her heart, the division in this community. And then when she, those kind of statements just makes me know that she's not really aware of what's happened, what happens in this city of Westminster. The Vietnamese community is extremely divided, Councilmember West. It's been divided for a long time and it can, and that's the sad part that every, everything is political in the city within, in the Vietnamese community, including this monument. When the original monument came about from the Quang Tri Victory Foundation, my, my wish was for that committee to work with the veterans, the Arvin, the Arvin veterans and the American Vietnam veterans. But that did not happen because of the division in the Vietnamese community. And that wasn't going to happen because of the two different factions of groups here in the city of Westminster. And if you can cure that, you'd be the savior of the city. And by some of the actions that this current new council is doing, that is not going to happen. This is continuing, these few couple of meetings, the, the agenda items that you guys have been placing on there is just adding fuel to the fire. You're just dividing the city even more. So it's just, the fight continues. The fight goes on. If you go look back at this, this, not just this item, but other items, I've never brought any items forward that's going to create division. I simply just have been acting and, and, and putting my judgment on the, on what's in front of me and the agenda when other council members placed their agenda items. This QT Committee, you know, I feel really, really bad for them. They've been working extremely hard to try to do what they felt was right as far as to honor who the, the people who they were trying to honor. There's been a lot of setbacks, a lot of things that weren't going right for them. So, you know, I feel bad. They had a lot of things working against them. But, you know, there, it, we, it has been a problem as far as coming to a consensus. But, you know, they've come this far. I think we need to encourage them and give them an avenue to, to complete their, their project and find, help them find a a location for, for, for their monument. I've have, and I'm going to still stick to my, not my recommendations because they're not, they weren't my recommendations. There were the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Commission as far as locations. I think at least we as a council can just be supportive in that way and try to, you know, find an avenue for them to work with a private, you know, two private parties to find a, a solution to this, but to totally just to disband them and, and just don't give, at this point, you know, I mean, we got to try to be somewhat supportive. But these kind of agenda items is just adding fuel to the fire of the division that exists in the city. And that division who is, has been really killing our city from any kind of progress at all. So many cities around us are just keep moving, keep progressing. I mean, just take a look, I stand right next door and, and we're still stuck. We're stuck in these divisions. And now we have a division, you know, with, with some of the new council members just come, bringing that, you know, to our city. And it's just hopefully that we can just try to take a step back from what, from each other and try to come to some sort of a, a, a mutual agreement that we're going to put our city, our residents first and stop this division that continues to, to plague our city. So, I mean.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Menzo. It's my turn. I understand what you said. But you know how many times we, we tried to bring this item up and asking to choose the location? And it take a lot of times to, to, to discuss about this item. At this point here, you're still thinking that we are going to choose the location for it. And you don't want to have this in the public park. And only park that you want to have is in the memorial park. And nobody second that. Nobody second that. If you continue to say that this is going to be placed on the memorial park, I can assure you, it will never, you will never have the second. Okay? And if you tell me that you are not going to put it in public park, then why you are trying to, 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 to push for, for location? And after location, after location. You know, every time that we, we, that's on this agenda, we spend so much time and effort and waste taxpayer money to talk about this item. So I, I know that I support, I, I, I always said myself, I support it. But at the same time, we have to be reasonable and we have to make sure that we do something that it's according to the, the will of the, the people that we are serving. I have talked about choosing a location, public location with with a committee, community outreach so that we can feel that how, you know, wherever we want to put that, to make sure that people, you know, are not against the idea. That never happened. So at this point here, I think that we, we had a number of time talking about this already. We are not going to spend more money for this. We are not going to spend any effort for this. We are not going to waste pupil times and staff time. So I, at this point here, I know that we have, we have, who is the motion, who make a motion on this?
Councilmember.
I, I want, who is it?
We have two items, so is this?
Yes, I, I, that's one I want to, to ask. You want to make a motion with both items or just one item?
Yes.
A and B.
Yes, I want to motion this together, A and B.
All right, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor. Rokov, please.
Just to be clear, this is the resolution to approve the resolution that is in the packet. It's a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster disbanding and dissolving the Quang Tri Monument Committee. And then this motion also includes the termination of the city's Quang Tri Monument Project.
Yes.
Rokov, please.
Thank you. The Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo? Councilmember Ho?
It is highly unethical of these three to vote yes on this agenda because you've been against it from day one. Ninety-nine percent of the time you abstained, you were, you already stated and positioned yourself that you were against this monument. And so now you're putting this on, you're, this is unethical. And the answer is no.
And so now you're putting this on, you're, this is unethical. And the answer is no.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Abstain. With my abstain, I believe that it's still passed, right?
I don't know, resolution.
No, it's according to the city.
I mean, I've guarded that one.
Well, it's, it's, it is non-financial and it's.
In this, in this particular case, it involves a resolution. So ordinances, resolutions.
Okay, then I change my vote, yes. Okay. Next is item seven point two.
For the record, the motion carries three with two abstentions.
Thank you. Okay.
No, that was not, that's not it.
Item seven.
Motion carries three with one abstention and one no by Councilmember.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven point two, consideration of ordinance repealing chapter two point five fifty-seven, terminating the Cultural Arts Commission. For this one, we need the report from staff. Note, and do I have, can I entertain a motion?
I just want to ask, what is the, the reason for the termination of this commission? Is it somehow detrimental to the city?
Okay, this item put up by
By me.
By Council, Vice Mayor Nguyen, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason is, I when I first came to this city council, I make a promise to my constituents that I'm going to streamline, you know, on the process of the city to save the money for the city. So whatever that we don't need, okay, we eliminate it or cut it. So we don't have anything to do with this unless you show me that, Councilmember, Councilmember Manzo, that we doing something with the Cultural Arts and Commission for last year. Anybody apply to it or anything? So just tell me.
Well, I mean, it would be, I mean, I think it doesn't, it's not hurting it, it's not costing the city any money to have it there. And if we, if we were to get somehow, somehow, if somehow we can advertise it better and we get some students, some art students involved and give them a platform to bring some, some art and culture into the community, what's wrong with that? I don't understand. I can see your point if it was somehow costing our city resources and money. I mean,
So the question, the question is for the staff also. So do we have anything to do with this? In the past, if you advertise, you know, to get the people into this commission, or anybody have applied, you know, to be on the commission?
So this is, so, once upon a time, there was a cultural arts committee of some sort, and it was disbanded before my time. This, this was brought back because there was some interest in trying to get people engaged with cultural arts. In other cities, when you have cultural arts, it could be things like, you know, having an arts show or working with the schools to promote art or art in public places, those types of things. Historically, in our city, we have had, we've struggled to get people to apply for any committee. This is a newer committee, so it needs to get some traction. But normally, the most activity for for recruitment of, you know, of committee members is every two years, which would be in the next month or so. So if there's, you know, it, it, it would, it's usually more traction and more attention during the vacancy, you know, process, which is, again, every two years right after the election. So it doesn't hurt anything to have the committee right now. You may want to see if anyone applies. When we do our recruitment in the next month, and if nobody applies, then maybe that would be a point to, to reconsider the, the, the purpose of this committee. But that, that's really what it's for, is to arts in public places, you know. Westminster has a big art community. We have a theater.
So, so, City Manager, so the last time when this first was commissioned or committee was flown out, it's just, what, what kind of effort was it on? How do we do that? Was just social media?
Yeah, usually when we have, when we, yeah, usually when you have the vacancy, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's usually when a vacancy is out there, it's just posting on social media, the vacancy notices on the website, clerk announces it. And that's generally it. The, you know, I, I don't know if it went to any of the, you know, the colleges that are here.
That was my next question. So like the, our youth committee, that one is advertised at.
It goes to the schools, yes, yes.
So something like this, if we give it another shot and advertise it in this arts, you know, art classes at that local high schools or, or the college, maybe they can have, you know, better luck and bring some sort of art into the community.
I, I will say I wasn't as involved with the advertising process of this committee, so I can't, I can't attest to how far the advertising went on it. But, you know, certainly with a cultural arts committee, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the interest in other cities are people who are, they themselves are part of the art community, whether they, you know, own a, a studio, like a, a dance studio, or they own, you know, maybe a, an art gallery, or they're a photographer, or you know, or, or, or something along those lines. You know, I, I can't attest that we've done the, the best that we could to advertise it. And I will say, you know, last year was a bit of a, a busy year. I, I do, I do want to stress though that, you know, you yourselves as council members, if you know people out in the community, it's really important for you to, you know, to, to let your constituents know as well, because you may know people who aren't watching council meetings, going on social media, reading newspapers, or going to school.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Christine and Councilman Manzo. This is the question for Vanessa, I think. Do you think that community outreach, you know, internal community outreach, we going to advertise, you know, put some, allocate some money, you know, to advertise for this program? So if we actually going to have something, you know, for this commission, that, you know, I willing to, you know, reconsider?
Yes, it's, so it's actually, yeah, so it's actually part of, so committee recruitment process actually goes through the clerk's office, so they have vacancies, you know, noticing that they have to do, they do it in the paper, they do it out here. Certainly, we, we don't normally pay for the advertisements per se for any of the committees and commission recruitment. A lot of it is involved with, a lot of the outreach is direct contact. So in this case, you know, now that we're, you know, that, now that we're in this recruitment process where we're going through and recruiting for all the agents, you know, for all the committees and commissions, we can certainly reach out to the colleges, we can reach out to some of the businesses that are art related in the city as well. We can reach out to the folks over at the Rose Center, who, you know, there are residents on that board. There, there are places that we can reach out to. So I would say it's worth, it's worth the shot now that we can, you know, direct our attention toward the overall committee, commission recruitment process.
I have the question, I have question for, for City Manager and staff. If I'm not mistaken, this item was a long time ago, probably five, six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Did we do anything with the recruiting or put out a request or, you know, application or anything like that?
Yes, the clerk's office posted it.
So we posted, we did advertise, I can't remember off the top of my head how many.
So when did you post it?
We usually post out in the.
When, 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 when?
I don't have that information.
Okay, you got any, you got any application?
We did make announcements during meetings.
So, so regardless, right now you don't remember when you put it, but then did you get any application back?
No, we have not received any interest or.
So basically, that you put out the, the application, nobody interested. That's what I read, I read, okay? Secondly, what I see here is a resolution. But there is no defining of what the tasks are going to be. The people who volunteer, you know, when we talk about cultural and arts, it's involved with history and things like that. I understand from the young people, they have, you know, they have skill of art skill and things like that. But you know, if we, when we talk about court and art and cultural, we are talking about history. We are talking about you're going back and make sure that, you know, whatever we came up with, it has to be a meaningful to, for that. So here, the resolution doesn't tell me anything. I don't understand this, this cultural and, and art commission is going to do. So at this point here, I don't see any anything benefit us. Number one, nobody applying for it. Number two, there's no definition of what, what going to be, you know, for the committee to be done. And it's just there. So I, I don't think it's, it need to be there at this point. That's my, that's my opinion.
Make a motion. A motion.
So.
What's your motion?
To move forward with this resolution.
To move forward, terminating?
To terminate it.
Okay.
Because it hasn't been, I, I just feel like, you know, if we want to clean house and we want to make sure what we propose have to be effective, then let, let it's effective and, you know. But if it's not doing anything.
I have a question.
Unless you want to take it up and continue.
I just have a question. I'm trying to question for Councilmember Wes. Can you elaborate? Because you've said it quite a few times. I'm just trying to understand. What is, can you elaborate what cleaning house means? Or what do you mean by that?
So we have been consistently, since we got sworn in, and even you consider moving our city forward. And in the last two, four, six years, I guess I'll repeat myself. We saw city council meeting, and it's embarrassing, the time and the resources was waste. The respect is not on the council, nor those people who work here or consider Westminster their home. So for us, what I'm saying, if this is not doing anything, this commission, and what's saying is that if you want to take it up and run with it, you can. But if you don't want to take it up and it's not doing anything, it's not hurting us to terminate, terminate this. I'm still talking, Manzo. Councilmember Manzo, I'm still talking. So please don't interrupt, as you told me not to interrupt you. So please respect me.
I'm asking you, you didn't answer my question. I'm trying to ask, what, what is, no, you didn't. I asked you, what do you mean by clean house?
That's what I just told you.
You didn't answer the question.
I'm not going to continue to that debate, because this is what happened in the last two, four, two, six years. And we're not going to have this dialogue to continue.
So to me, cleaning house means that.
You asked me.
Yeah, I asked both of you to stop right now.
I want to just have a question.
Councilmember Manzo, you have the right to ask a question, and she has the right to answer that, or no, okay? If she doesn't want to answer it, it's up to her. So if, if, you know.
I'm just making the point that she didn't answer my question.
That's it. Okay, so she, she says that she's not. So Councilmember Ho, do you have anything to say?
That's your, yes, may I speak?
Please, Councilmember Ho. You have a question.
So I know for the last was of four years, Councilwoman Amy West has been running for Congress. And so I don't know why you pop in and you decide you want to clean house. And I, I, I also don't want, understand what that all means. But I think, you know, if we ask staff for a recommendation or for comment, then I would think we want to take or consider our staff's opinion. So what I heard is that we really haven't given a good try. I do remember that when this was, this this basically position was created, or what is this called? This Cultural Arts Commission is created. It was kind of in the middle of the year. And it wasn't as, and you jogged my memory when you, and you didn't say specifically, but I think you, you did mention that it really didn't receive traction, but may receive better traction this time around, because you're kind of bundling with all the other commissions that you will be soliciting, correct, for people to apply? So that's what I hear. And so to clean house is to make sure that we, you know, we look into why a commission or a resolution or a position has been created. This commission was created out of respect for another council member, I believe that was Councilmember Manzo, who created this or brought it back. It was really not your creation. I do, okay. So regardless, I just think that, you know, people go through, they think through things through, and someone who's been on the commission, on the council for four years, three and a half years at the time, you know, there's a reason why. So you don't come, come on board and you say you want to clean house, you can't define that. After hearing what staff, two, three staff members have said, I believe that, I, I think it's a very reasonable comment that you made earlier, is that you're willing to give it a go again. And I, and as, as I heard, that it doesn't cost us anything, any of our commissions when we advertise. So I would recommend that we give it a go and bring this back. I think that we have a lot of, I'm, I'm actually not an artsy person. But I know that we have a lot of folks who are high schoolers or even younger. And I've seen some amazing murals, like, is it the, not Del Rosa, but the other one, the one we just had a.
Westminster Crossing.
Yeah, Westminster Crossing. And I don't know how they solicit different artists, because one was, I remember it was representing the Vietnamese arts, and then the other was Hispanic, or I can't remember, but they were two different. I'm sure done by two different artists. So how did they find people like that? You know, I'm sure you don't have to pay. People just, you know, just want to be on this commission, but they just need to know about it. So how about it? If we give it a try, and I think this time, we are starting at the beginning of the year, just as we have with other commissions. So I'm asking we give it another try and before we, we cancel it.
Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
All right. I listened to, you know, all of, all of us. And I recall that this morning, I've been to Lakinta High School. And, you know, Mayor Nguyen and Chief of Police right there, Darren. And I believe the Councilwoman Amy Fan West was there too. They invited you, but I, I believe that you wasn't there. So we all watched the young people, you know, perform an excellent, I mean, I mean, like a so good show that that's, I was impressed so much. And I would like, you know, our city, if we can, you know, reach out to those young people, you know, young students, you know, not in, not just in Lakinta High School, but, you know, all over the city, to give them an opportunity now to perform in, you know, maybe in Rose Center. You know, maybe we can have some program like allocate the money, the budget, you know, to support them. So if we have the concrete solution, concrete plan like that, I would like to, you know, to give it a chance.
So I, I, so if I, if, if you're, so if I, if I may, the, the, I completely understand where, where you're going. Yes, we have a very vibrant community of, you know, arts here, right? There's a lot of art, there's a lot of history, just as you said. When the Cultural Arts Commission was reestablished last year, so some of the duties and responsibility of this commission was to recommend policy, obviously adoption of policies always by the city council. But these would be policies or like recommendations on policies related to like arts programs, cultural affairs, like a cultural arts center and fund development, things that would promote the arts, giving attention and study to the arts. giving attention and study to the arts and cultural affairs, development of facilities possibly um as they affect the people of Westminster, stimulate community interest in cultural arts, visual and performing, interpret the cultural needs of the community, encouraging individual citizen groups and business community to donate time, funds, in-kind services for the development implementation of programs, special events, uh, projects and facilities, and serve as a sounding board to which the council can test some of these plans and ideas that are related to the arts. Um, and of course, you know, just engaging the community altogether in, you know, visual performing and other types of arts. Um, one of the thoughts, you know, when this was first presented was, again, this committee would be, um, it would be of adults, possibly working with our youth committee, which we have a very active youth committee that that does include students from like La Quinta, students from Westminster High School, um, and, uh, you know, Bolsa, Bolsa Grande. Um, we have a lot of just students that um that are very engaged. And this is something that could, you know, that could, um, again, engage and encourage people to be more active in our arts community. We have the Little Saigon Blueprint that is, um, you know, that that's in the works, right? This could be something in which they evaluate things like how the Little Saigon area looks aesthetically, what the facade looks like. Um, you know, I I would, I I would say that we really didn't give it a good shot before. I feel like we could give it a good shot now. Um, I I do say that for our commissions and committees, a lot of the times we don't have a lot of interest for whatever reason, but that's that's just historically on everything. But I feel like with this, if we give it the right shot, um, people will be interested because this is the feel-good stuff, right? Like the the arts, it's the stuff that makes you happy, it's the start that makes you, um, you know, it it makes you think about things. It makes you, you know, just, um, you know, visually stimulated, like this is something, um, I think if we gave it a shot, we would be able to make it successful.
City manager, um, I think this, when you said the blueprint, I think that reminded, made me remember why this, how this came about was when we had the blueprint presentation.
Yes.
So in the in the art concept came about as far as.
Yes.
Street art.
The history, the history of this item, why it was revitalized. So I don't remember why it was discontinued a long time ago. But there was a point when we had, and I think Vanessa can explain why the old one was discontinued, but the.
Back in two thousand twelve, when we had layoffs, many of these commissions were consolidated. So we disbanded cultural arts, we disbanded the youth committee, we disbanded the Commission on Aging and kind of collapsed it into the, what was then called the Community Services and Recreation Committee. So as we've moved away from that and kind of come back to a better place, commissions were brought back. So the youth committee was brought back, Commission on Aging was brought back, and now this is the final one that had bring back.
So back when, when we presented the little little group, uh, Little Saigon Blueprint for investment, it was a, it was a project in which, um, there were community members who were looking at just different improvements that could be made to enhance Little Saigon. So looking at facade improvements, looking at how we can do outreach to the community out there to encourage the business owners to, you know, to to revitalize and remodel their, you know, their businesses, kind of bring um bring their business practices, you know, to to modern times, et cetera. And part of, so part of the discussion was art in the, you know, art on the on the the streets and the intersections. And so the the conversation that came about with that is, you know, how do we get that art in there? And so council member Doe, because it only took one member of the council, he and another council members had expressed um art in in public places within that area. And he was the one that ended up putting it on the agenda, which is how that came about. But ultimately, um, you know, the decision was made by the council to not only use the commission as, or the the Cultural Arts Commission as a as a resource, you know, for for people to be able to, you know, gather and talk about the artistic possibilities of the Little Saigon area, but just beyond as well. Because the, you know, we recognize that Westminster, Westminster's community is art. We saw that this Saturday. I mean, there were components of the Tep Parade in which we could have used and a cultural arts commission. So that that's that's my feeling on why I feel like if we we just need to give this just a shot, just a shot.
Hey, manager, I have a question.
It's my turn. I I have the opportunity to talk about this item. Okay, please, can I? I I appreciate staff, you know, bringing up the, you know, the points, uh, good points about cultural and arts commission. Uh, I don't doubt that that the committee that we we need to have. But since this item here, we put on half, you know, nearly more than half years ago. It's nothing done. We put it out there, nobody uh apply for it. And there is no description of as of what need to be done. And I afraid, I afraid that, I afraid that, where is the 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 description here?
It's in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance where it was established, which is ordinance number two, five, eight, two.
Where where is that? Let me know.
So in the, it's the last attachment to the agenda, which was ordinance two, five, eight, two. It's like this, it's the second page duties and responsibilities.
Mission, organization. Okay.
Two point five seven oh five oh.
Two point five seven, but five oh. And then, okay. Put out the the work, the open recruitment. We have this along with it. I'm trying to find out why didn't we have any uh of their applications on it?
I'm going to pull that up in a moment here, mayor. Um, and we did, uh, we did look into, we did publish three times on, in February after it was adopted, again in April and then in July, and it was published in the Westminster Herald. And we noticed actually. And the notice actually just gave a brief explanation that the Cultural Arts Commission is advisory to the city council. It makes recommendations on policies pertaining to arts program, cultural affairs, the Cultural Arts Center, and fund development, and interpret the cultural needs of the community and stimulate community interest in cultural arts, both visual and performing. And that went out along with, um, when we were trying to recruit for other committees and commissions as well.
Okay, so we we actually put out three terms. And in your opinion, can you give us, you know, your best estimate or opinion as why we didn't have any application turning?
I I can't.
You can, okay, thank you. Got it, I'm not putting you on on spot for that, but just just trying to find out what was the reason. Um, at this point here, I would, I would second the the uh the motion to go ahead and start fresh again. You know, until we have everything, uh, because we already put out three times, none of them uh apply for it and let us start again, and then hopefully that we will get some people in um for the, I I I agree that this is a good cultural and arts commission that we we have. But because we failed three times, I don't think that we we need to continue with this until we have a better way of doing it. So I second the motion.
But just to be clear, the motion is to um is to to rescind it, to rescind the commission out of the code and then to essentially eliminate the the commission. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
Um, before we move on, may may I win? Uh, may I speak? I, you know, um, I listened to all the sides and I think, you know, I, from my point of view, I think um uh, we should, you know, give it another shot. Um, so if uh uh, so I'm the one that put it on the agenda, right? So if I want to give it another shot, so what what is the warning that you're gonna?
Well, I think, uh, who was the maker of the motion in this in this case?
Council member Fan West.
So, I mean, you could ask them to withdraw the motion if you if you'd like in terms of.
Oh, okay. Yes, with all due respect to, you know, the council and Mayanwin, I, um, at this time, uh, at this moment, I would like you to reconsider and, you know, um, withdraw your motion.
I I have one question before.
Give it another chance.
So basically, I guess from Mayor Charlie, he is concerned because he feel like nothing is done. We have three try, but the thing is that I know you guys mentioned that we would do something different. Um, city manager, but I just feel like, give us practical ways that you will do to help reach this out. Like, for example, today we went to La Quinta, right?
Right.
High school and their event that they have on campus was phenomenal. So I don't know why they would feel attracted to come to our commission unless we tell them like, hey, come, you know, we have this, we would love you to contribute to the city, to this commission. I mean, what are you guys doing exactly? I mean, are we going to different high school? Because for me, number one, I love the fact that you guys want to reach the youth because that's been my heart, uh, you know, city manager, you know, that's what we talk about. And mentorship, you know, and growing our youth because they are the future of this generation. And I think if you have a concrete plan of what we'll be doing, then I think, you know, giving it a try would be phenomenal. Because if we see result and that we actually getting people to join the kids, so, you know, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I so, yes, so in terms of, so in terms of the the committee makeup of this, these are the adults. So these aren't the youth that will serve on this. Because there is a separate youth committee in which there are youth on that committee and that one is very active. This Cultural Arts Commission is comprised of adults, so people that are eighteen and up. So it won't be the high schoolers, it won't be the kids. Um, but in terms of, you know, i- i- in terms of interest in the past, um, you know, we've, this was advertised in the Westminster Herald Journal. It probably should have gone out in Vietnamese as well to the Vietnamese media because we already know that there is a lot of that cultural component. So that's something that can be fixed. Obviously, we can publish it and translate and publish it there. That's the number, you know, that's the number one aspect. Number two, historically, why we do not get very many applicants? And I will say, as you start to, as vacancies start to pop up in all of your committees and commissions, you will see that there is actually lack of interest in applying outside of the recruitment time, which is generally, you know, in December, January of of, you know, every, after the election. That's just a historical factor. And that actually goes back to, once upon a time before many of our times here on the dais, um, you know, there was a culture in Westminster where if you applied, if you weren't connected to a particular person, you couldn't get on. And, you know, this Cultural Arts Commission is one of those commissions that is, again, relative, it it should be relatively benign and a and a feel-good, happy type of a a commission, right? Um, and so part of the, part of the stigma that has been associated with our um, with our commissions, committees and boards is that if you didn't, if if you weren't affiliated, you couldn't get appointed. And that's why people haven't applied because they're already, they're already making the assumption that why should I apply? I'm not going to get on anyway because I don't know anyone. But this is a commission in which that isn't the case, it shouldn't be the case. Um, and so, you know, things that we can do with outreach, we can certainly send these out. We have the business license list. We can send it out to the businesses that are within those art categories, like the dance studios, the music studios, et cetera. We can definitely send this out to the Vietnamese media, you know, that, again, there are people that are very artsy in that community. Um, certainly, we can reach out to our community college. Golden West College has an amazing arts department. We worked with them uh when we had our water conservation contest, you know, last year, the year before that. Um, so there are, there are outlets, there are different ways that we can do this better this year. I will say, I apologize for not being as ingrained in the process. But, you know, again, we had a very busy year last year, um, especially with our finances and and things that we were trying to do different. But certainly, we can do better this year to try to get, you know, gain some um some momentum and some attraction.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from you is that um you are going to make it better in term of seeking for for applicants.
More direct.
And and you are beside beside of Vietnamese leaves, what else you you playing there?
Well, I mean, we do, we do a lot of things in three languages right now, it's just become the norm. Um, but a lot of, you know, reaching out to the high schools, reaching out to, you know, reaching out to the high school, like the teachers, for example. And, you know, if they're residents, maybe they'd be interested, um, reach, again, reaching out to the community college, uh, reaching out to the businesses that are arts-related, that's really important. Um, so, you know, reaching out to some of our seniors that are at the senior center who may be interested in, you know, in this. Um, I I will say that, you know, the a lot of the, you know, maybe there are some folks who want to apply for Parks and Recreation that don't make it. This is something that they may consider instead because there's some parallels that go along with it. Um, you know, reaching out to, you know, again, some of our, you know, some of our volunteers that we have with, um, you know, with Project Shoe, um, the FRC. We have FRC families that, you know, that may be interested in being more involved in their city. And this is something that, uh, again, um, is is more, you know, it's it's more, I guess, what's the word for it? There, it's, again, it's it's feel-good, um, it's enlightenment. Mm-hmm, it is positive. Um, but uh, but, you know, but certainly, we have more outlets for outreach um this time around that I think we can just do a lot better.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think these are all very good points. I think part of the issues, I've seen these in other cities. And when they lack vision, that's where they're not really helpful. So probably, and I I think the city manager has already mentioned a number of things, but you know, in a very near future, if she, if staff would come back with some ideas, the whole point of the the board is to be a sounding board, to think out ideas that the council has indicated are important. So like Little Saigon, or, you know, is, are there ways that they could improve the Tep Parade to make it more culturally appropriate? Um, recently, in in a city, I know they evaluated under the freeway passes, they they got free money from Caltrans to put up art and they hired a professional artist. They evaluated, you know, eight, nine different designs that were proposed by artists to put under those ugly freeway passes that might be a culturally appropriate, um, interesting, um, design. So there's different things that the council might say, hey, we want you to look into the following. Could you come back with some ideas? And then the council makes the final decision. But they're a sounding board for, because we haven't done this traditionally in this city, but then maybe now we have an opportunity to make this a focus.
Like I mentioned earlier, I think it's a good commission, uh, commission that we uh we have. I don't, I don't totally against that because it's just that I don't want it's felt the fourth time, okay? I don't, it's already felt the time already. I don't want it to continue to fail the fourth time. But if the, if staff telling me that they are doing more and and they, they have a positive uh thinking of 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 what is going to move forward, then I I will, I will consider to try again. So I don't know what, um, your motion, you still have your motion or no? Uh, council member West, or you want to?
I mean, I I understand where our city attorney is suggesting that if the staff can come back and let us know what you guys will be doing, like, for example, that he given other city that he has witnessed. I think that will be helpful. I just feel like there's no concrete, you know, what you guys are doing or what's going to be like. So I just feel like we just need more information and guidance.
So so that's actually the whole point of the cultural, that's the whole point of any commission, actually. So some of the committees and commissions are very clear on what they do. So planning, for example, they have applications that go through, they have very specific things that they do. But some of these other ones, like, you know, Parks and Recreation or this cultural arts one, for example, or like the youth committee, um, it's always an, it's an, it's an ever-moving target. And some of the things that they do are going to be based on what your direction is. So it's not so much staff, there are going to be staff things, like, for example, Parks and Recreation, we need to update a Parks master plan, for example, that's something that they will do for sure. Or within their authority, you know, tree memorials or whatever it is. But um, but for other things, you know, it's it's going to come from council because all these commissions and committees are essentially your commissions and committees. So your vision does come into play as to what those committees do. It's not just all staff-driven. That's why some of them.
Can I?
Can I chime in? I think the excitement, uh, that came about this was when we had the, the presentation of the Little Saigon Blueprint. It was a beautiful presentation. That presentation, I remember, had a lot of art that came from other Little Saigons. Uh, I remember, I think I remember Houston and some other, other locations where there was another Little Saigon and there were some art components that came, that was in the presentation. And then that kind of got the other council members excited, like, hey, how come we can't do that? We have a, probably the bigger Little Saigon than any of those other ones. I think that's, that's, that's where it came about, that, that, that we can have that art component in our city as well. And it just, we just don't have that. And for us to kind of put the brakes on the possibility, you know, uh, I think that's really short-sighted on our part. And, uh, I think that if we have a commission who's actively looking, because us council members, we're busy with so many other things that we have to talk about, decisions we have to talk about. We have a commission who's just actively brainstorming of how we can implement art in our city. How can that be a bad thing?
Councilmember Manzog, um, may, uh, go ahead and wrap, uh, I'd like to grab, uh, to wrap this one up.
Mr. Mayor, can I motion?
Uh, I withdraw my, uh, second. And so you, you, do you want to withdraw yours?
Motion to withdraw, but to move forward, um, if we do move forward, I want staff to come back with, uh, guidance and guidelines, what you guys will be doing to market this and which group. And when you mentioned about like from eighteen to senior folks, that's so broad.
Well, so I can actually tell you what we're going to do right now because we have vacancies that we need to post. So we're posting, so we're posting vacancies right away. So it's, so we're already posting that we are going to be recruiting for this. So if, if this council withdraws the consideration to repeal this, this commission tonight, we're going to move forward with our plan, which is to do the, the recruitment for all the committees and commissions as scheduled. And we will include this with that. But on top of that, we are going to translate that commission and committee recruitment advertisement in both the English and Vietnamese. And we will target, like I had mentioned, to all of the, you know, all the businesses that are related to arts, visual performing or otherwise. We're going to advertise to those, we are going to reach out to Golden West College, which is our local community college, and they have an artistic presence. We'll also reach out to Coastline Community College for their, you know, for their, um, you know, to see if their students or, or, you know, anyone over there is interested as well. We'll reach out to the high schools, um, for their teachers, if there are teachers that live in the city that want to be part of this commission. And then we'll just put it out on, you know, like I said, we'll put it on on social media in all three languages as well. And then also the commitment that this council, that if you know anybody, um, who may be interested in something like this, to encourage them to apply, as you would encourage them to apply for any of the other commissions that are going to be opening.
I, I don't, I don't doubt, uh, that, uh, staff is stepping up, uh, to do the job because, you know, with their commitment, I'm sure that they can do it. So I don't know whether you want to go ahead and, and, um, modify your, uh, to have this continue or, uh, what's your motion again?
So my motion is to resent, resent, I'm gonna, okay, not terminate this. But I, uh, want you guys to move forward and I'm thinking that it's best, like you mentioned.
I mean, basically have staff come back with some ideas for the council to consider about what to emphasize?
Yes.
What you mean?
Yeah, I, I want to second that, uh, so that we can move forward.
Ideas for what the commission is going to do, projects to work on, or?
That's what the ordinance says, it says that the commission exists for, to look into things. So if the council says we really like a commission to look into Little Saigon or?
We'll, we'll put, we'll, we'll slap something together.
Okay. All right, so we have my motion by, um, council member West and second by Mayor Nguyen. Rukor, please, to continue, uh, with the cultural, uh, arts commission.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by council member Fan West, seconded by Mayor Nguyen. Uh, council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, um, the last item is, uh?
It's midnight, so you have to extend it, you have to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, uh, okay. Is there a motion to, uh, extend a motion? I think it's just the last item.
Motion to extend.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to extend the meeting. Rukor, please.
Thank you, council member, um, and that motion was made by council member Monzo, seconded by council member Ho. Council member Fan West?
No.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, um, uh, next is comments from the city council and agency members, including A B one, two, three, four. Uh, who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you. Um, well, I just want to say that we started our new year with mixed emotions of joy and sadness. And so first I want to talk about the Tet Parade. That certainly gave us a lot of joy, um, and excitement. Really a great way to start a new year. And I want to thank staff, gosh, that's almost like everybody. I'm sure it took a village, it took everyone, um, you know, to actually put something as wonderful as such, together in such a short time. I really counted on you and you pull through, I knew you would. So it's everybody, so, um, we won't have time to mention everybody's names, but you know, you know who you are. U S leaders, directors and, and everybody under you. I really felt safe with our police, um, team there, um, thank you, chief. And, um, uh, I, you know, I, I thought it was a really wonderful, uh, well-attended parade, really. I was very impressed. And of course, I just want to thank the subcommittee, uh, the ad hoc committee, um, Mayor Chi Charlie. And, um, I don't know, um, if there's involvement with, uh, Councilwoman Amy West for taking part. Um, I'm sure you, you did a lot too. Um, and of course, the firecracker event at Asian Garden Mall has always been my, one of my favorites, right after the Tet Parade. Compliments of Mr. and Mrs. Frank Chow, I'd like to also publicly thank them for, um, Rain or Shine, um, they always have it at exactly noon. I don't know why, I mean, it must be something about warding, some warding off some evil spirits at exactly noon. But it's always been at noon, um, right after the, the parade. And I just want to remind everybody at home, as well as everybody here, that the Tet, Tet hasn't ended. Uh, it's really ten days of Tet. Tet Festival by U V S A in Costa Mesa, that's this coming weekend, I believe Saturday and Sunday. Not Friday though, right? It's really a wonderful tradition to go with your family and friends. So I hope you come, I will certainly be there, I hope, I think the council will be as well. So the, and a little bit about the sorrow, um, that was the event that, um, that happened. That took the lives of eleven people in Monterey Park. And about, I think I heard the number seven in Half Moon Bay. Our deepest sympathies go out to their families and our thoughts and prayers are with them. So, um, that, with that, I just want to, um, thank you for the, um, I guess, you know, to start the new year with a bang and, and, uh, thank you for staff, everything you've done. Uh, not just, uh, the Tet Parade, but everything else. And so, um, I really enjoy twenty twenty-two. You, you guys did a great job. I don't know how you can do a better job, but I'm sure you can. Twenty twenty-three, I, this year, I think I feel like it's going to be a great year for our, for our city. Thank you.
I'll go next.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I want to echo a lot of the comments from Councilmember Ho. I know there was a really stressful time, probably month and change for staff that, you know, working your butts off and a lot of, you know, late nights and early mornings, working, you know, on the phone, trying to get everything organized and planned and all the different, um, you know, partnerships that we created that hopefully are going to be there now even. Because when we do something now, you know, then we can hope build on that and, and make it even bigger and better. And, and the partnerships that, that I saw this year compared to other years, I think that was one of my favorite parts, that, that the staff was so able to make those connections. Christine and Adolfo and Vanessa and the whole team, uh, making those connections with surrounding our cities, with the high schools, all the different, and hopefully that got them excited, I'm sure it did, that, that they're going to want to build on that. And, and that's, that's what I, I like seeing out there, what I saw at the parade, that I didn't remember seeing that in the past. Uh, so that, I think that was one of my favorite parts of seeing that, and marching bands, which I don't, we didn't have too much of in the past. And I just want to, um, thank, uh, you know, our staff, all our staff and our police department, with the leadership of our chief, that, you know, come Sunday morning, um, there was a lot of tension and unknowns of, there was the, the, the reports that we got, at the time, we weren't sure the details of the, of the shooting, if it was what it was, if it was a hate crime or if it was, or what was it, the, the conditions of it? And luckily, we found out that it wasn't a hate crime, but at the time, our police, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, we didn't know that, right? So to, for our, our P D to be, you know, and, you know, enhance what they normally do, I think that was major, especially how, how short staff we already are. So I think that was a big, a big thing and, 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 and you guys deserve a lot of praise to, to keep our, our community, uh, you know, feeling safe out there. I know I did, I saw a lot, a lot of you guys out there. So, um, yeah, just a very terrible tragedy, tragedy. And unfortunately, we have too many in our, in our country. And, I mean, just days go by and we have a, another one, you know, Half Moon Bay, plus I think there was another one recently. And it's just, it's, it's just, it's just way too many. And, and we keep saying our hearts and thoughts, our prayers are with them, but, you know, I think we, we need to have, to be able to do more with that. Just, I'm just so proud of all, all the hard work they, they, that our staff has done. Adolfo, Christine, everybody. So I, I really, I know that our council is going to say these words, but I know we really, I want you to understand that we really truly appreciate all your hard work. I always say this is, is a compact type, compact group, but it's a hard-working group and that goes a long way. So I appreciate that. And just, um, just want to close in, our mayor is going to, um, do something and close in, because there are, are council meetings. So thank you all, I'm, I'm, thank you council for your hard work as well.
Yes.
May I share, uh, my training?
Please.
I went to the training, uh, A B one, two, three. And, you know, we learned a lot of things regarding, you know, receiving, starting this year, federal laws that we can't receive, uh, over two hundred and fifty dollars from anyone. We, you know, we can't make that decision when we go to voting within twelve months. Also, we've learned about bribery, like someone's offering or giving, or we receiving something that of value and for the purpose of influence our action, you know? And it's basically what their job is, you know, to, to remind us to protect ourselves as elected officials and always to do the right thing and, um, you just watch our back and cover ourselves because there's people out there, even elected official or other people who don't want the best for you. And, uh, just to cover your base, to do what's right. And then whenever you feel there's, you know, something is involved in that decision, that gift or whatever, then to say no, you know, or someone saying, can you do this, you know, if this is going to be given to you? You just say no, you know, I can't promise you that. If you want to donate, you can donate, but I can't promise anything. So basically, it's just, you know, living above reproach, uh, training A B one, two, three was the purpose of that. So that's awesome.
Thank you.
Bring report for that, yeah.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Uh, as usual, I want to make it quick, uh, because it's late. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, uh, all the staff, uh, to make it happen. I ain't talking about Tet Parade. Even though we have, uh, very limited, you know, times on our hand, but you guys make it happen. So, uh, I really appreciate it, um, the com- communities all, all over the U S. I mean, like, you know, they applaud, you know, us, city of Westminster. And, uh, I also, uh, one personally, thank you, uh, Mayor Nguyen. If it wouldn't for him to take the lead and, uh, uh, councilwoman Fan West on the ad hoc committee. So, you know, we wouldn't have that Tet Parade, a successful Tet Parade at all. I saw him, you know, working day and night, um, you know, pick, uh, talking on the phone, calling, you know, all, all of the groups, you know, we have like, how, how many groups that we have in?
Seventy.
Seventies, okay, so the seventy groups, you know, they, they not just, uh, right, be, be, be right there for us, you know, to, to, to arrange on the Tet Parade. But it's Mayor Nguyen who contacted them personally, you know, to ask them to participate into the Tet Parade. So for that, I would like to, you know, apologize your, um, contribution to, you know, to the community, to the city.
Okay, it's my turn now. Uh, first of all, I, I would like to apologize, my apology for keeping you guys here, uh, until this time. Hopefully that we can end it, end it, uh, you know, earlier next time. I want to thank you, um, to Vice Mayor, but I think this is a collaboration effort from everyone of us, uh, working together. And, you know, we know it's, uh, hard work, uh, in front of us and we, uh, you know, ourselves, um, uh, do that and, 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 you know, make it happen and make it happen successfully. So I, I want, uh, you know, uh, thank you, each and every one of you, uh, including our chief and, uh, you know, the, our P Ds, uh, working really hard on that, um, uh, for the, the Tet Parade. I, I heard a lot of positive, uh, feedback, so, you know, there, there's no doubt that you probably have, uh, heard the same thing. Talking about tragedy, um, I know that, you know, we are feel saddened about, you know, what happening, uh, to the, uh, people in Monterey, as, um, Monterey Park, as well as in the Half Bay Moon, what is it? Half, Half Moon Bay, uh, community. You know, uh, with that, um, it was scary, uh, when, you know, it happened on, uh, early or late or early on Saturday night. And on Sunday night, Sunday night, we get, uh, Channel Five and Channel Eleven, uh, you know, they, uh, interview us, particularly about this one. So, you know, it, it's, uh, it's not good to have the event, um, you know, it's a planning event right there and then, but then, you know, we have to answer this, uh, on the national news or on the, on the news. So anyway, um, with that, uh, we, uh, I contacted, um, our staff and, uh, we had the letters, uh, sent out to, um, both, um, Monterey Park community as well as, uh, Half Moon Bay community. Uh, so let me, uh, let, allow me to read this to you so that you don't feel, um, you may already receive it, if not, then this, this is it. Dear Mayor, this is a letter to, uh, the Monterey Park community. Dear Mayor, City Council and Monterey Park community, on behalf of the entire city Westminster's community, I would like to express my sincerest, uh, condolences, uh, for the horrific, uh, I would like to express my sincerest, uh, condolences, uh, for the horrific, uh, tragedy that occurred on, in your city on Saturday night. On a weekend that we should have been full of, uh, only joy, excitement, uh, and positivity, positivity for communities of other world, feeling of loss and sorrow were overwhelming. May the eleven men and women who sought, um, to blissfully ring the new, Lunar New Year at the Star Barroom Dance Studio before they were senselessly killed, rest in peace. I don't want to go on, uh, but, uh, the last, um, one is our hearts are with you during this difficult time of mourning and rememb- remembrance. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Monterey Park community and especially with the victims of their families. It's the same letter, it's just different, um, different, uh, uh, content, uh, with that last number to the, um, Half Moon Bay community, so I don't want to read that again, but it's very much the same content. With that, I don't think that we have anything else, I would like to adjourn, uh, the meeting in memory of those victims, uh, in, um, Monterey Park as well as Half Moon Bay, uh, community. Thank you very much, and the next meeting is going to be on, next regular meeting will be held on, uh, Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
So al- also, our next meeting, we have the special meeting, Strategic Plan Study Session, February seventh, eight thirty AM to two thirty PM.
All right, okay, thank you very much, all right, meeting adjourned.